Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the clerk to call the roll, please, so that we can establish a quorum.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Here.
Councilmember Laloei? Councilmember Laloei?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier?
Here.
Councilmember Getta?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
I am here.
Councilmember Vang?
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg?
I am here. Good afternoon, everyone. We do have a quorum and we have a busy afternoon calendar. Why don't we begin and ask Councilmember Getta to please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Everyone, please rise. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Getta. Members, let us begin this afternoon with the consent calendar. Are there any questions or items that members would like to be discussed or voted upon separately?
So, Mr. Mayor, for the record, I have no callers on the consent calendar. And on item number one, I'd like to make a correction to the staff report. To the Parks and Community Enrichment Commission, Victoria Vasquez's term should be January of 2021 through December of 2024.
Okay, thank you for that correction. Is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll move consent.
I will second it, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmembers Harris and Jennings. Any comments from the members at all? If not, then let's call the roll.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloei?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Getta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, fastest consent calendar in city history. Not sure about that, actually, but it might be. Okay. Very good. Let's take the public hearings and item nine, we've got the alley closure issue in District Five. Is there a staff presentation on this item?
Yes.
Welcome. Ms. Johnson?
Hi, yes. Hi, good afternoon, Mayor, Madam Clerk, and members of the City Council. My name is Jennifer Johnson and I'm with the Engineering Services Division in the Department of Public Works. The item before you this afternoon is for the temporary closure of forty-two alleys within Council Districts Two, Three, Four, and Six. Broken down by districts, there are, I'm going to share my screen with an exhibit. All right, hopefully, that is showing. Within, broken down by district, there are twenty-two alleys in District Two, which is on the, on the left, four alleys in District Three, two alleys in District Four, and then fourteen alleys within District Six. These alleys were previously closed under the California Vehicle Code and with City Council approval. The reasons for the closures have been to decrease or eliminate criminal activities such as illegal dumping, drug use, and burglary. The California Vehicle Code also requires the temporary closures to be extended every eighteen months in order to keep the alley gates intact to continue blocking off the alley from criminal activity. With the temporary closure, access to the alley is still provided to the homeowners and tenants along the alley. The Police Department, Fire Department, and Traffic Engineering all support these closures. And with these supporting documents, staff recommends the approval of the alley closures for another eighteen months. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. We do have two members of the public that are signed up to testify on this item, so why don't we take those two callers?
Thank you. May I, my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yeah, I just would like to say I'm in District Four, U and Alhambra, and I support this overall. And then specifically, in the attached packet, line twenty-seven, the alley number seventy-four. I'd like that to remain locked. And there's really no reason, it doesn't provide any access, even if it's open to anything meaningful. You can still get anywhere you would want to get from the street itself, from the street, so. All it does is keep it safe. If it's unlocked, it's just the only people who would want to go there, someone's breaking into the backyard. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name is Amber Witzi. I'm in District Four. I live on U and Alhambra, known as the Alhambra Triangle, right in, sandwiched in between all the freeways. And we actually have two alleyways, one behind our home on U Street, and then one in front of it, which runs along Highway Fifty, and they're both closed. And we, the whole neighborhood completely supports having these alleyways closed. It's really kept us feeling very safe, especially living so close to the freeways and the terrible unfortunate homeless camps that are happening all around the city and, and even, you know, a block or two from our home. We really wouldn't feel safe or comfortable with either of the alleyways being reopened, especially given, you know, what's, what's happening right now. So, all in favor of keeping them closed and hopefully closing them for good. That's all I have.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers.
Very good. Well, I do have Councilmember Laloei with his hand up for a comment or a question. Go ahead. Councilmember Laloei?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I definitely support this. I do have a question for Jennifer, and that is, if there are areas within a district that are not on that map, is that something that can come to your office to discuss about different alleys? And does that have to come back to the council for approval?
Yes, sir. So, new alley closures do come through my group, and it goes through a process. And that process does require the City Council to approve the initial closure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Councilmembers Shenier and Getta. This is mostly in your districts. Do you want to move the item?
No, there's none in my district. We're coming back next week on mine, so I'll leave it to you.
Okay.
Glad to open and close a public hearing and move the item.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, moved in second, and let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloei?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Getta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. Okay, that passes. That's another unanimous vote. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, Councilmember Shenier, I know next week we'll come back with your rallies. I remember, you know, maybe I thought of District Five because I remember when former council member and Senator, Assembly Member Deborah Ortiz first launched the Alley Closure Program back in the nineties. Glad to see that it is still, it is still working. All right, let's move to item ten, which is the SAC Kids First Coalition proposal. It's an oral report. I know I have some comments, but I think I will hold them, and I want to hear the presentation. Who is presenting for the, for the coalition?
Hi, Mayor. This is Monica.
Monica Ruelis, welcome to you, Monica. Is Ruelis?
I'm trying to put my video on, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, we, we hear you, but your video is not on. Take a moment. It's okay. There are only thousands of people watching. Don't worry.
I'm also wondering if I, okay, I do have the capability to share my screen. That's perfect. So, it says the host stopped my video. I don't.
Is there a way we can, is there a way we can help? Is Ruelis, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I'm working on it.
Okay, we're working on it. Take, take a second. No worries.
There we go. Thank you.
There you go, you're on. Now we see you and hear you. Wel, welcome to you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mayor Steinberg. I want to first start off by thanking you and the City Council for making the space for SAC Kids First to present our proposal to you. We are coming here today after, you know, a year of this pandemic and wanting to continue to push forward the advocacy for children and youth in Sacramento. So, I want to set the tone a little bit for this presentation, just to remind us why we are here. So, last year, the council, a couple of members of the council and yourself, Mayor, opposed Measure G in order to put forth a youth fund proposal that would enhance your capability to support children and youth in Sacramento. So, our goal here really today is to continue with that promise and to actually push forth and take some actionable steps towards that. So, we heard you loud and clear, you know, when you said that youth were a priority for you, and we just want to be a partner in this process so that we can continue to move forward. So, we're excited to be here, and we want to know what you think about our proposal after we present. So, I'm going to start sharing my screen and present. Can you all see? Okay, cool. Thank you, everyone, for having us. My name is Monica. My pronouns are she/her. And I'm a community organizer with Youth Forward, and I'm also the coordinator for the SAC Kids First Coalition. I have the honor of being here with two of my colleagues, and we are going to present to you our proposal for a children and youth fund in the city of Sacramento. This is our third attempt at this youth fund, and we're hoping, again, that we can work with you all to identify the best way to move this forward. I'll start off by presenting a little bit about SAC Kids First. So, we are twenty-eight member organizations strong. We have sixteen hundred and twenty-plus individual members on our listserv, and we really pride ourselves on being intergenerational, multiracial, and cross-sector. So, we have members in our coalition that are at the high school level, youth members as a part of the SAC Kids First Coalition, and we also have adults who have five, ten, or twenty-plus years in the youth development field. We also believe that we represent the diversity within Sacramento because we have organizations that are very specifically serving the youth in Sacramento, though, like, their ethnicity. So, we have E-Basi who, and Monge Innovating Politics, who serve Southeast Asian youth and Asian youth in Sacramento. We have organizations that serve Black youth in Sacramento and organizations that serve Latinx youth in Sacramento. I also wanted to let you know the different actions that SAC Kids First has supported the council with. So, we appreciate the continued support and allocations for the youth pop-ups, and we're glad to have seen this go towards the, our community-based organizations that have those existing relationships with youth. We also support fair free transit, so thank you, Councilmember Shenier, for continuing to be a leader on that. We believe that young people in Sacramento deserve to ride public transportation for free. And in the past year, we've also supported the following one-time allocations. So, six million dollars from the CARES Act funding and six million dollars from the mid-year measure youth funds. So, we were really happy to see that, those one-time allocations. We're glad that the council is continuing to see youth as a priority. But later on in this presentation, we will talk a little bit about the cons of one-time funding. One other piece that we continue to support is narrative change at city, at the city of Sacramento and City Hall. So, in, on October twenty-seventh, you all unanimously passed the Public Safety Resolution, which expanded the definition of public safety to include youth services. This was a really big win, I believe, for Sacramento, but especially for the youth, whose voices were honored and heard in the space. And when they were asked what safety meant to them, now we can say that in Sacramento, public safety means youth services, prevention, and intervention. So, we're excited to see where we can go with that in terms of funding as well. I'm going to pass it over to my colleague Dee, who is going to introduce herself and let us know a little bit about the goal of why we're here as well.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dee. I am, you know, part of the nonprofit organization East Bay Asian Youth Center in Sacramento, also a member of the SAC Kids First. We want the city of Sacramento to identify and analyze the current resources that are available to the youth and in which part of the city of Sacramento is it available to. There are many youths who are still left out and do not receive, you know, resources. Second, develop a strategic plan to reach those from racial equity and intersectional perspectives. Sacramento is the capital of one of the largest states in the U.S., but does not have a stable funds for their youth. Lastly, we want to move away from the one-time fundings and have long time, have a long-term funding from it. Youth are constantly moving around programs and meeting new counselors or mentors because it is impossible to fund these programs and nonprofits who do good work in the community when the money is not there. The reason I say that is because it takes a long time for youth to open up and to gain trust from, you know, their mentors or, you know, some, the young adults who are in these programs or nonprofits, organizations who are trying to help the youth in the city of Sacramento. So, this is just a kind of fact check. As we live in one of the wealthiest states in the nation, we also have the highest rates of child poverty in the country. Out of fifty states, we ranked thirty-fourth place. This is just to see that California being ranked in the middle, it says a lot, and we need to do better as a team. Twenty percent of children live in poverty in Sacramento. If you were to break these, you know, ethnicities down a little bit more, the percentage would be much higher. You know, we have thirty-two percent of Indian, twenty-nine percent of Blacks, twenty-four percent of Latinx, eighteen Asian, I mean eighty percent of Asians, twenty-three Native, or, you know, Pacific Islanders, and fourteen percent of white children. And as we all know, you know, for example, Southeast Asian myself and Asians are lumped into a category just under Asians, and we don't correlate in income or living circumstances. So, with the percentage of just eighteen percent about child poverty in Sacramento, if we were to break it down for Cambodians, Laotians, Monge, Vietnamese, and so forth, the percentage would be much higher than the eighteen percent of Asians in Sacramento. From therefore, I'm going to pass the mic to one of our also amazing SAC Kids First member, Robin, to further explain in details.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Robin Rose Hamer, and I'm the Director of Housing Services with the Sacramento LGBT Center. I appreciate your time and attention to our presentation today. As you're well aware, without disaggregated data, we don't know the whole story. Programs that allow for detailed data collection can pay better attention to who's being served and, more importantly, who's not. You can't monitor what you don't measure. Entire communities get erased when we do not take them into account. And as my colleague Dee mentions, the Asian category of representation is frequently misappropriated in terms of dollars because that entire racial category is inequitable. Next slide. Specifically, when we talk about LGBTQ plus youth, the LGBT communities represent about one-fifth of the TAY who are experiencing homelessness. We know this from the two thousand nineteen PIT count because it was specifically asked. So, again, you can monitor what you measure, measure what you monitor. This trend, however, has been noted by Gallup, isn't on an upward trajectory. So, the number of folks identifying as LGBTQ and in particular Gen Z, who are the TAY, we expect that those PIT count numbers to rise significantly because according to Gallup this year, it's gone up about fifteen percent. I'll give the mic back to Monica.
Thank you, Robin. So, to move us along, we wanted to also highlight the adverse childhood experiences numbers that we see locally here in Sacramento City. So, as you see on the graph here, Sacramento City has a twenty-four percent ACES score, or ACES percentage on children who have experienced two or more adverse childhood experiences. This is higher than the county level, the state level, and the national level. And so, we really want to, with this children's fund and this proposal that we're putting forth to you, to understand that there are kids that are most impacted by violence, trauma, and abuse. And so, we need to pay special attention to these populations because oftentimes, this can impact their development later on. So, just highlighting the need for continued support of our most vulnerable youth in Sacramento. Kids living in poverty also tend to have fewer resources to provide enrichment, tutoring, sports, and summer activities. Kids living in poverty also attend underfunded public schools. It is seen a lot that teens and young adults enter the workforce at a younger age to meet basic needs. Oftentimes, our young adults, if they are living in poverty and they're the only family member in their, in their immediate family that can work, oftentimes, the pressure of the household income is put on them as well. Kids living in poverty also regularly experience hunger. They live in neighborhoods with higher rates of air pollution, violence, and blight. And, let's see. They also rely heavily on public transportation and publicly funded programs. I'm going to pass it back to, or, actually, this is me. So, one thing I did want to mention is that a lot of these data points that we are bringing up are pre-COVID data points. So, understanding that in twenty twenty, you know, in March, when we were put into shelter in place, the adverse impacts of that were being felt in real time in twenty twenty. And so, a lot of these data points don't capture that, and we know that there will be a couple of months and years until we're able to see those repercussions. But what we're already seeing in Sacramento that the, is that the housing costs are continuing to rise. So, we understand that as the housing costs rise, this means that children, more children will live in poverty in Sacramento because their families will then be pressured to use more of that income for housing or actually not use income on housing. And, you know, that ends up meaning that they are experiencing housing insecurity. I'm going to pass it back to Robin.
So, some of our partners at IYT conducted a survey, and this is one of the data points that we do have during the pandemic. And we had the great pleasure of speaking with the Sacramento Youth Commission last week. And this was actually one of the things that resonated most deeply with that group of young leaders, and that is how Sacramento High School students are faring under distance learning. And we know that schools are coming back into the classroom now. But the reality is, is that sixty-two percent of Sacramento youth said that their grades in one or more classes have dropped. And sixty-three percent said that anxiety and stress have had a negative impact on their academic performance. So, we must find ways to remediate that lost learning, and we must find ways to provide additional mental health support to youth who are already struggling. And as my colleagues previously mentioned, there have been several opportunities through the city for which we are grateful for one-time funding. But as a program operator and longtime program designer in the city of Sacramento, one-time funding is problematic. It is difficult to grow and improve a program with one-time funding. It's difficult for professional development reasons. It's difficult to maintain and train quality staff. And most importantly, as Dee mentioned, it is almost impossible to build trust and relationships in communities when you're ramping a program up and ramping a program down year over year. If we want to build a workforce of committed and dedicated staff to a career ladder in the nonprofit organizations, we have to give them greater job security. Service organizations deal with trauma just by ramping up and ramping down programs, and their staff, by extension, not only have to support youth who are in trauma, but then have secondary trauma from their employer because their jobs are uncertain.
So, how do we maximize the impact of the city's investment in children's and youth? You know, going back to what we want and our goal and us hoping that we could come as one, what do we currently have for the youth and what more can we give them? Also, developing a strategic plan such as where in Sacramento are the resources not at? And who are not receiving them? Lastly, secure a stable funding. There are many great programs and organizations that, you know, they are worried about how their youth can continue to receive these resources or be part of a program if the funding is not there. So, here are just some of the examples of the children's funds across California. Santa Cruz, which is fairly new, funds their youth ages zero to five. Programs by our marijuana tax. The Bay Area, such as Richmond, Oakland, and San Francisco is funded through a budget set aside, which was what we were fighting for and how we got the idea. A little backstory, history of it, is that back in two thousand and fifteen, we visited Richmond, and, you know, we saw some resources that they received from the budget set aside, which made us motivated and brought it back to Sacramento. Oakland's Kids First started in nineteen ninety-six, and it was renewed again in February of twenty twenty, meaning that the people who live in Oakland believed that there was a great need for youth programs and resources and how this budget set aside actually helped, you know, their kids, you know, grandchildren and et cetera. So, building out the system, the city needs to strengthen its system to track youth investments in a standardized way, meaning, you know, who is receiving the resources and who is not. Second, the city needs to invest in necessary system and infrastructure to support the baseline and ongoing programmatic analysis, like, you know, questions such as which age group are currently being served by the city? How are the funds distributed? How are they being served? You know, which ones are one-time versus ongoing, and what are the qualities of these programs?
We're asking for the city to develop a strategic plan, starting by reviewing the infrastructure and reviewing neighborhoods and child populations to make sure that they're all being equitably served and provided resources to help them thrive. We're looking for an outcome-focused plan that's grounded in racial equity and analysis. We want to ensure that we're including options for disaggregated data, like non-binary options, and giving the city an opportunity to collect more accurate data. We want to know where there are gaps in spending so that we can create programs and ensure that there are additional investments placed where they're needed most.
Before I get into the third step, I just want to highlight what my two colleagues just presented on. The, the strategy and the analysis are steps that we can take now, the steps that the city can take now immediately so that we can better analyze what youth are being served. This third step to secure a stable funding stream is asking you to consider the fact that a lot of what we have been talking about in terms of investments in youth and supporting youth in Sacramento and children, a lot of this isn't worth much unless we create a stable fund so that we can continue to increase that impact so that it can evolve over time. We are asking the city to consider, consider moving beyond the current spending pattern, which is one-time funding. And we propose that the city create an annual funding stream that will build out the youth strategy to support both city programs as well as community-based managed programs. And we would like to work with you, Mayor Steinberg, as well as the City Council, to potentially identify that funding stream. Thank you again for having us. It's such an honor to be here presenting to you and to the people of Sacramento our proposal. And we are done with our presentation, and we're happy to take questions.
First of all, I want to thank you very much for your continued commitment, your hard work, your success in organizing, and the. your hard work, your success in organizing, and the very thoughtful presentation. It is a great springboard, really continued springboard to prepare for 2022 as we've promised we would do when it comes to the ballot. I want to hear, we do have fifteen or sixteen people, I think, signed up to testify publicly. Why don't we hear from the public? And then I know I'm going to make a couple of comments. I'll turn it over to Vice Mayor Chenier, who is, continues to lead so many of these efforts. Councilmember Gueda, I know, and others to speak as well. So let's hear from members of the public, please.
Thank you. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Madeline Lee. I'm a sophomore at Luther Burbank High School. I live in District Eight, and today I'm here to advocate for the SAC Kids First Youth Fund. I'm an older sibling in the IDH program at Burbank. When we tried to arrange school schedules for my siblings, we realized that this academic program was not available to all schools. I am curious, why is it not available to all students and how other students may want to participate in those type of programs? It wasn't until my sophomore year that I found out about the East Bay Asian Youth Center, also known as E-Bacine. Being a part of this program during the pandemic taught me a lot with expressing myself, motivation to do good in school, and a great experience meeting new people. In District Eight, there's a lot of diversity among the youth. And with more funding, Sacramento can afford all types of programs to meet the needs of every student. In my experience, I think more job opportunities will help prepare us for future careers. I truly think if Sacramento moves forward with this proposal, it will motivate students to be more engaged, have more opportunities, and create change. I am strongly encouraging you all today to support SAC Kids First, to create a youth fund in Sacramento. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jasmine Core, and I live in District One. Today, I'm calling in to express my support for the Children and Youth Fund proposal presented by SAC Kids First. I'm a high school student, which is why I know firsthand the importance of quality programs and services for kids in Sacramento. In order for children here to be well and thrive, we must invest in those, especially those who are vulnerable. Establishing a Children and Youth Fund allows us to consistently provide sources such as mental health services, mentorship, job opportunities, and academic support that kids need and deserve. I've seen myself, as well as my peers, struggle and because of the lack of sources in the past. And now we've all felt and seen the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic and have to recognize that kids have been impacted emotionally and academically. It's time for Sacramento to put SAC Kids First.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Jesse Archer. I use he/him pronouns, and I'm with the Sacramento LGBT Community Center and also live in District Four. I'm calling today to express my support for the Children and Youth Fund proposal presented by SAC Kids First. As the center's Assistant Director of Youth Programs, I have seen firsthand how the investment in our most vulnerable will uplift everyone. We are at a pivotal moment in Sacramento history. Establishing this fund will ensure the consistent mental health resources, job opportunities, and academic support for our youth that they so desperately need. So over this last year, we have seen just how important and vital these resources are to ensuring that our youth are thriving. I want to reiterate my support for the Children and Youth Fund proposal so we can put SAC Kids First. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Chia Dong. I grew up in District Seven and lived in District Eight and Five for some time. I'm calling in today to express my strong support for the Children and Youth Fund proposal that is presented today by SAC Kids First. As the Managing Director of E-Bacine Youth Sacramento, in Sacramento, and my work specifically with underserved API youth, I know firsthand the importance of quality programs and services for kids. We have seen firsthand and felt the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic and have to recognize that our kids have been adversely impacted academically and emotionally. I call today not only as a managing director of a youth organization, but as a parent and as the aunts, aunt, and sisters of youth who reside in Sacramento. And I'm urging you to strongly support the Children and Youth Fund proposal. It is time for Sacramento to put SAC Kids First. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yeah, I'm calling, I'm, since this is from District Three. I'm calling in support of, of SAC Kids First Fund Proposal. I'm, I'm strongly supporting our youth. I believe in investing our youth. And I hope you guys pass. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name is Yi Tao, and I live in District Seven. And I'm calling in today to express my support for the Children and Youth Fund proposal presented by SAC Kids First. Currently, I am a first-year college student studying anthropology at Sacramento State. As a first-generation student and as a youth who was born and raised in Sacramento, this Children and Youth Fund is very, very important to me and to many, many other Sacramento youth members. In addition to enabling more accessible community resources to be available to us, these funds are used to help allocate funds in providing more job and internship opportunities to the youth, as well as more equally providing a multitude of different community network resources and services to the youth. As a youth member who needs financial support, different bosses for professional experiences, and adequate mental health services to survive and succeed in the present and the future, I would like the city of Sacramento to put SAC Kids First. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Allegra Taylor, co-founder of the Village Advocates, members of Sacramento Act, and all of us are none. I live in District Eight, have an, I'm sorry, I live in District Six. Have an office in District Eight and in District, and in District Seven. I'm calling today to express my solidarity for the Children and Youth Fund proposal being presented by SAC Kids First. I'm a grandparent, a mentor, and an advocate for youth and families in your districts. Having boots on the ground, we know firsthand the importance of quality programs and services for kids in Sacramento. In order for our kids to succeed and feel supported, Sacramento must invest in them, especially those most vulnerable. Establishing a Children and Youth Fund allows community members like us to consistently provide resources such as mental health services, mentorship, job opportunities, and academic support that kids need. We have, we have seen and felt the impact of COVID-19 pandemic and have to recognize that our kids have been adversely impacted academically, emotionally, and emotionally. It's time for Sacramento to put SAC Kids First.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jay Franco. I'm a leader with SAC Kids First, and I live in Sacramento, District Four. I'm calling in to voice my support for the Children and Youth Fund proposal. And I want to thank all those who have consistently supported and offered thoughts and actions to get us here. The three steps presented are necessary to creating a truly impactful infrastructure for equitable change. Investment in youth will require data gathering, analyzation, strategizing, equitable budgeting, and the key part, implementation and practice with oversight, then repeat. But why? It's because the youth deserve it, the city deserves it, the city staff deserves it. At the end of the day, we are advocating for a well-resourced and informed local government to provide adequate public safety. Sports teams, organizations, political agents may stay or move, build or not, but the youth will always be here and the investment should be as well. All those who were invested in a counter campaign, who may have thought they had a better solution, should be here to continue to build. If not, then they do not truly care and are co-opted by ulterior motives. Let's continue to change the culture, take your place in progression, and let's get to work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Neo Moreweathers, and I live in District Four. I grew up in District Six, a product of the S U S D system here in Sacramento. I'm calling in today to express my support for the Children and Youth Fund proposal presented by our SAC Kids First team today. I am a community organizer with a local nonprofit called Youth Ford, and I am also a proud representative of the Sacramento Kids First Coalition. I know firsthand the importance of quality programs and services for kids in Sacramento because, like I mentioned, I am from here and I work directly with youth in Sacramento. Over the past year, this pandemic has certainly impacted not only our most marginalized youth who live here, but all youth. In order for our kids to be well and thrive, we have to invest in them, especially those most vulnerable. Establishing a Children and Youth Fund allows us to consistently provide resources such as mental health services, mentorship, job opportunities, and academic support that our kids really desperately need right now. We've seen and felt the impacts of this COVID-19 pandemic, and we have to recognize that our kids have been adversely impacted academically and emotionally. Respectfully, it's been time for Sacramento to put Sacramento Kids First. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and City Council members. My name is Maki, and I'm with Mong Innovating Politics and SAC Kids First. I reside in District Four, and I want to thank SAC Kids First for presenting the proposal earlier today. Right now, we have youth living in poverty without access to wellness and have a slim chance of improving their situation. Youth do better in cities that invest in them, and youth struggle to survive in cities that don't invest in youth. We're seeing this happen right now. As someone who has worked with youth in different cities for the past ten years, I've seen how drastically different their experiences are when the city actually cares and actually invests in marginalized youth and youth in poverty. We need to put SAC Kids First. We need to approve this proposal. And this is how we make a better Sacramento together. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Alexis Sanchez, and I live in District Four. I'm calling today to express my support for the Children and Youth Fund proposal presented by Sacramento Kids First. I am the Director of Advocacy and Training for the Sacramento LGBT Community Center, and I know firsthand the importance of quality programs and services for kids in Sacramento, and especially the need to establish a permanent fund for our kids. In order for our kids to be well and thrive, we must invest in them, especially those most vulnerable. Establishing a Children and Youth Fund allows us to consistently provide resources such as mental health services, mentorship, job opportunities, and academic support that kids need. It is time for Sacramento to put SAC Kids First. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Matthew Bridges, and I am a resident in District Four. I'm calling today to express my, my firm support for the Children and Youth Fund proposal presented by SAC Kids First. I am a, I currently work as a community organizer at the Alliance of Californians or Community Empowerment Ace. And I know, I see firsthand, I talk with folks who are experiencing housing and economic instability. And that also affects their, their young, their children. It affects young people immensely across, across the board. This is our opportunity to shift from a scarcity-based mindset about how communities grow equitably. It takes sustained targeted investment for that to happen. This is the way forward and our moment to put people first by uplifting young people as they are our future. When we don't invest in our youth equitably now, we pay for it later, and so do our youth. Invest in community-based resources and care for our young people, and by doing so, we will have a more equitable and racially just Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Next caller, please. And I'd like to remind callers to turn down the device on which they're watching the meeting and listen for the caller on your phone. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jaime Rodriguez, and I'm calling in today to express my support for the Children and Youth Fund proposal presented by SAC Kids First. I'm, am with Sophomore Winners and Recovery, and I know firsthand the importance of quality programs and services for kids in Sacramento. In order for our kids to thrive, we must invest in them, especially those that are vulnerable. Establishing the Youth Fund allows us to consistently provide resources such as the mental health services, mentorship, job opportunities, and academic support that these kids need. It was, there was a slide that came up with, I believe, it was twenty-four percent of the youth have experienced some type of adverse effect, which means that if we do nothing now, then those twenty-four percent will continue to end up on drugs, alcohol, and ultimately incarceration, which repeats the cycle of incarceration all over again. So if nothing changes, then nothing changes. So we support that a hundred percent and hope that something can be done to establish this fund and continue to do what we do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, and good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council. This is Jufella Miranda from District Four, and I'm calling today on behalf of the California Center for Civic Participation as their program coordinator. We are here today to support the proposal brought to you by SAC Kids First. As an alternative educator working with youth all over Sacramento, this programming that we provide is vital. As a young person myself, it was programs like this that literally saved my life because it connected me to community. We can't do this alone. Young people can't do this alone. The COVID pandemic has hit all of us really hard, and we definitely need a system to be more intentional about who we're uplifting, and we need the consistent funds to make sure that there is longevity in sustaining and supporting our young people. One-time funds is not enough. It does not provide the support that we need to make great impact for the long term. If we want our city to be well and thrive, that means our kids need to be well and thrive as well. So I hope that you all will be a unified front and support this proposal and put SAC Kids First. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. This is Lee Lo, and I am with the Sacramento API Regional Network. And I'm also calling in from District Two. I'm calling in strong support of the Children and Youth Fund presented by SAC Kids First. As a young person who also grew up in Sacramento, I have continued to see the impact when Sacramento neglects investing their youth. Unfortunately, I and many of my peers are among that statistics of folks who have had to experience adverse childhood experiences with no additional support due to the lack of investment. And the investment, the Children and Youth Fund is a strategic investment in community development, in prevention of mental health conditions, in education attainment, and also improving our public health. And as elected leaders of the public, it is essential to be listening to our community. And this proposal is community and youth-led, and it is timed by our local electeds. Commit to the values- commit to the values of community voices that they spoke of during their campaign trials. And I urge the City Council in strong support of this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Dexter Niscahala, and I currently live in the city-county borders. Yet I have lived in District Eight more than half of my life. Today, I'm just calling to kind of express my support for the Children and Youth Fund proposal presented by my team, SAC Kids First. I am a youth counselor for East Bay Asian Youth Center in Sacramento, which services youth and their families across the city, and I know firsthand the importance of quality programs and services for kids in Sacramento. In order for our kids to be well and thrive, we must invest in them, especially those most vulnerable. One-time funding is nice, but one-time funding comes when there's a lapse in continual support and a problem needs to be fixed. Establishing a Children and Youth Fund allows us to consistently provide resources, such as mental health services, mentorship, job opportunities, and academic support that kids need. Not just myself, but our kids, families, and youth themselves have seen and felt the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic and have to recognize that our lives have been adversely impacted academically and emotionally. I believe that the time for Sacramento to put our youth first was in 2020 with Measure G, where they would have had been set for the next 12 years. However, here we are now asking Sacramento to put SAC Kids first today. Thank you very much, and I just love the work that all my team's doing. I appreciate it. And again, thank you, City Council. Thank you, Mayor, for listening to us today. Have a great day, everybody.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. It appears they've hung up. Do we have any more callers? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Dear Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Diane Cloke, and I grew up in Sacramento area, and I am a youth leader with HIPS. I hope you feel inspired and moved as I am to take action to improve the life and well-being of all youth. I hope that you feel all the love and the care and the organization that is going behind this to help support efforts to improve opportunities for children and youth by accepting and following these proposals and steps to build out a system to identify and analyze existing investments in children and youth, and to develop a strategic plan to reach more children and youth from a racial equity and intersectional perspective, and three, secure a stable budget and funding source for children and youth programs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers.
Good. Well, thank you very much, Madam Cloke, and thank you to the members of the public. I guess I want to make the first comment here as I listen to the testimony and listen to the presentation and reflect on the past several years and the work of Kids First. Really, what Kids First is doing, they're calling the question. They're calling the question. Are we willing to back up our good intentions with sustained resources? Because everyone elected to office, everyone in the community will say, "Kids come first." But the proof is whether or not, when it comes to budget time, we back it up. And here is the irony, if you will. Several months ago, the City Council, again with Vice Mayor Chenier's leadership, passed a very, call it revolutionary, but it really wasn't, a public safety resolution that said public safety can no longer just be defined as police and fire services. It must include youth services, because if you really want to get at the root of public safety, you invest in young people. And certainly, I'm proud of the fact that when it comes to one-time funding, when it comes to our cares opportunity, when it comes to our one-time resources at mid-year, I think we have backed up our good intentions by significantly increasing our funding for youth and youth programs, and that's a good thing. But it isn't enough, because we also know the flip side, which is when tough budget times come, the first thing to be cut is the so-called discretionary funding, which shouldn't be discretionary, by the way. Discretionary funding, which is youth, young people. It's not a protected part of the budget. And that's what SAC Kids First is asking us to consider. And we have to follow through. And I know we can debate or look back about Measure G, and that was the past, but we now have a new opportunity. We have a new opportunity to get it right together. And I know I'm committed to doing so. I believe my colleagues aren't. I believe the community is. You know, we didn't have that darn two-thirds supermajority requirement in California to actually put forward a dedicated source of revenue, a new source of revenue and dedicate it to a specific purpose. This would be a much easier question. The challenge is, how do we take the existing funding that we have? And how do we make sure that the youth pot always goes up and never goes down beyond what, at least no greater than the percentage of whatever cuts we may have to make in a very difficult time? We can get this right together, and we will. And I look forward to our work ahead. Councilmember Gedda, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Vang, and I'm going to leave Vice Mayor Chenier for last to make a motion. Speak and make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I do want to thank all the youth that presented in this, and I think, you know, if I think back when we first started having these conversations, it was back in 2015 with Measure Y. And, you know, there was so much energy organized by so many of those youth who were out there after organizing, coming to council meetings, and when it came to election time, doing the work that needed to be done, going out there and talking to the community, and that failed slightly. Well, since that time, many of those young, our youth, they're in that timeframe of now, it's been four over four years. It's been, they're now either in college or, in some, unfortunately, may not, we may not know where they are now. So all that to say that I think our youth have waited long enough. I think that there was this movement that started five years ago, probably even before then. They've been consistent. They've come before us to try to provide some clear direction on how to move forward. And the things that they're asking for today, and I want to thank, you know, all of the folks here from Youth Forward who have come to speak on the SAC Kids First proposal, is they want us to be smart with our money. They want us to be better with our money. I don't think what they're asking for is unserved. It's good advice. They want us to build out a system so that we know what is working, what best way to address our most needy and most vulnerable, and that we be strategic about how to allocate those resources and to have that in place as part of our overall plan. And with that system, then we can clearly identify that need and our budget and funding priorities for that need. The other piece that I think I heard very loud here and continue to hear is that they want an equity approach to it. They want making sure that we're looking at this with our youth that are most impacted by these ups and downs and cycles. When we've had recessions and when we've had times where budget cuts happen, we eliminate programs within a single vote. And it usually takes us four years for us to recover. It sometimes may be longer from those economic downturns. Well, that four years is an entire transformative time in the youth's lives. That four years is the detriment of whether someone succeeds or we lose track of them. So I think the point here of making sure that we find a dedicated source or have a budget policy moving forward is important. So I know Councilmember Chenier wants to make some direction here, but I do want to make sure that we agendize this for the Budget Committee. So we start talking about the Children's Youth Fund proposal here and ensuring that we have a conversation during, and a real dialogue in the Budget and Audit Committee of how to move forward. Second, I hope that, you know, the Councilmember Chenier, I know he wants to make some, may want to make a motion here, but to give some direction to our city staff to start looking at this strategic plan and developing a larger strategic plan. We went through this three years ago, and we started moving through that process. I know COVID made a big impact on our ability to address that, but I want to make sure that our strategic plan is holistic. And what I'm hearing from our coalition partners is that this isn't about whether it's nonprofits or whether it's the city. You know, thank you, Monica, for your comments, you know, about what is the best strategic effort. There are things the city does great, and we should support those and grow those. Forthar, for example, that is one issue right now where I think we need to be doubling down and expanding the after-school support for our youth and for working parents who don't have the luxury of a nine-to-three job that they can go out and ensure that our youth have a great place. So direction-wise here, I also would like to ensure that our city manager and our team come back and look at, how do we look at expanding our current youth programs and finding out where are we strongest and play to our strengths, and where is the community strongest and be able to empower those efforts? Or maybe I'm seeing this because our staff retreat that we had on Friday, we did Strengths Finders. And for those who've done Strengths Finders, it highlights the fact that we should play to our strengths and raise our strengths up. And I think here, community is our biggest strength. The last thing that is, is that I want to make sure that we don't lose the greatest, also challenge right now on early childhood education and childcare. Before COVID, we had some starting numbers that 49% of our youth weren't reading at grade level by the time they were in third grade. And that's because we've lost the resources for many of our young kids in those formative and development years. Our kids are set to fail from the beginning if we're not helping those most in need. So I'll stop there by saying that I think we need to, one, put this in our plan and our process for budgeting, because our budgets basically are, in a traditional sense, just look at the years past and not thinking about how do we fund long-term for the year forward and to see how we dedicate the appropriate amount of money as we move forward. With that, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll stop there, but I do want to make sure that, I want to highlight all the great work that our YIPSY department has done and how we continue to expand the work that all of our staff in that department do.
You're on mute.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I just want to make sure I'm clear on the direction given by Councilman Garrett. So do we want to take this item back in the context of our FY22 budget discussions?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, exactly. So let me turn it over now to Councilmember Myve.
Actually, if, well, yeah, actually, I can go. I was going to wait for Councilmember Chenier, because I know he's been working closely with SAC Kids First regarding some of these.
Jay, I'm sorry. Jay, do you want to go next, or do you want to wait?
I'm happy to wait, Mr. Mayor. I think all of my colleagues will be saying incredibly important things, and how we put those together into next steps is where I'd like to be of assistance here.
Yeah. Thanks, Councilmember Chenier. So I'll go ahead and just jump right in. Thank you, Mayor. So first, I want to thank Monica, Dee, and Robin just for your presentation, and just thank you for your groundwork, and not just the three of you, but all of the youth that has been involved in this movement over the years. I want to thank all of the residents and youth who also called in today and just want to say thank you for, one, your heart and your hustle, but most importantly, continuing to push and hold us elected accountable to promises that, you know, we say during the campaign trial or now on the dais. I do have a few comments and questions and potential directions that perhaps Councilmember Chenier can also add to his as well. So first, I want to say, you know, I think we heard directly from our young folks today, our youth leaders, not leaders of tomorrow, but leaders of today, regarding the need for disaggregated data in this city. And I know that when the city presented the racial equity initiative earlier this year, we also heard loud and clear from community members why this is incredibly important, not just for subgroups within racial ethnic groups like Southeast Asian, Mong, and Yumian, but for our LGBT and our non-binary youth. And I think as Dee and Robin shared during the presentation, and I'm going to quote Robin, I typed what she said, you know, "You can't monitor what you can't measure," and she's absolutely right, right? And disaggregated data is so important to be able to reveal the patterns that mask larger aggregated data, and particularly for subgroups who are linguistically, geographically, and socio-economically isolated. And if we're not able, again, to identify these groups, it's going to be really hard for us to monitor and to see if our services in the city of Sacramento is actually reaching our most underserved communities. So with that, I think that there's been already a strong argument from this presentation and also in previous presentation and conversation on this dais or this virtual dais for the need for disaggregated data. And one recommendation or direction I have is really, I know that we are currently working on a larger racial equity initiative right now, and on me as leading staff with that, but really, just on a governance level and as a city council, I think we have to own the fact that we have to be able to push and what are some things that we can do now in this moment? And I want to know, what is it going to take to actually transition our city and our department to start collecting additional information? I like to direct city staff to actually present a plan on how we can make sure that this actually happens in the city of Sacramento. And that's really important. I think that relates to not just youth programming, but all of our programs, all of our programming throughout the city of Sacramento, that if we don't have disaggregated data on this, then we don't know if our services, and when I say services, not just youth services, but all of our services, if it's truly touching the folks that are often left behind. So the first one direction I would have is in relation to this, but just all city departments, I want a plan presented on what it will take, what is that dollar amount to make that happen in the city of Sacramento. So that's the first direction that I have on that piece, because I know that the youth share that today in this presentation. The second piece is, I'd like to also ask on record, because I think it's important for the public to know currently, what is the city of Sacramento doing right now to monitor our current youth funding? I know that the city has supported youth pop-ups, programming through our parks and recs, and through a community-based organization. Really excited that during the mid-year budget, there's funding to support youth programming. But I think I want to have also a better understanding, and I think the public wants to have a better understanding in this moment, how we are currently monitoring. And I think I hear the need from the presentation from our youth leaders that perhaps we don't have the system from their presentation, right? And I want to hear from city staff if you can answer this. What is the current system that we're using to monitor all our youth programming? Because I think quality programming is absolutely key. That's a question that I have for staff, so hopefully staff took that down. And then Councilmember Gedda mentioned about the strategic plan, and I think our youth leader also mentioned this as well. I am really tired of strategic plans, because I feel like we do so many of those. But it's important, right? Being intentional about how we move forward is really key. But if we are to do the strategic plan, I also want to add something, a proposal to the strategic plan, that we need to take a regional approach, because we have multiple school districts, right? There's youth funding from our school districts, from the county, and I often find nonprofits just struggling, right? Applying for grants for different jurisdictions, perhaps for one programming. And so if we are to do the strategic plan, it's absolutely important from a regional perspective. And if we're just talking about the city of Sacramento, to look at the school districts that are within our boundaries and make sure that we're leveraging dollars, so we are getting our bang out, the bang out of the buck, as they say, right? That's really important. I would add that recommendation if we are to move forward with the strategic plan. I do agree that I think this needs to be agendized and budgeted and audited. I know that we are in the middle of this now, but I will fight for youth funding, but I think we also heard loud and clear that one-time funding is not. I will fight for youth funding, but I think we also heard loud and clear that one-time funding is not sustainable. Um, we could try to fight and get some, you know, some dollars, uh, into the budget for next year for youth funding. But we heard loud and clear for our, from our young folks and, uh, community leaders that one-time funding is not sustainable. And if we are about action and next step, we have to have a long-term strategy plan on what we're gonna do. I think I haven't heard that yet from, um, the dais and hopefully our co- my colleagues and I can have a conversation, whether that's budget and audit or hear about what that next step would look like. How are we going to allocate funding and commit to that? Um, I had heard something around twenty-twenty-two, don't know what that's about, would love to learn more about that as well. And I think that we need to be transparent about that and our goal and our plan to make sure that youth funding happens. Um, and then lastly, I just want to remind everyone that, um, this city did pass a resolution to define public safety as youth services. So I want to make sure that we, uh, keep that at the forefront as the next agenda item is about, um, the police commission and recommendation and police, right? That youth services is a large component, it's a critical component of our budget. It should be a critical component of our budget as well, and we need to make that a priority. So I just wanted to put that at the forefront. Those are my co- questions, my comments, and again, I just want to say thank you to all the young folks who are leading the way, leading us um, to make sure that we, um, are doing right by our young people in this city. Um, those are all my comments and my questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Vang. I now have Councilmember Laloie.
Uh, Mayor, I had, I have.
I'm sorry, Jeff. I missed Jeff. Wasn't intentional.
Mayor, just really quick, for my questions, um, and directions, is that gonna be addressed at the end after all the council members speak?
Councilmember Shenair, I think is gonna try to sum up, sum up the direction, and if it's not, if what you, uh, asked is not included, then uh, I'm sure he'd be willing to make that part of it, okay?
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Harris, go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you know, the council members just before me brought up some salient points. Um, is investment in our youth critical? It absolutely is. That's beyond question. Um, I agree with My that we are lacking in performance metrics. We don't have data with which to make a logical decision about a funding stream for youth investment. But we don't have that data for an awful lot of things that we do. The fact of the matter is, we don't have sustainable funds for many programs in the city. Youth, youth services are, uh, in my mind, directly analogous to homeless services. We don't have a sustainable fund, uh, for all our endeavors into the homeless space. Uh, Jay mentioned the other day that we're rapidly becoming a social service agency for the homeless. Uh, but can we sustain that? Can we afford it? Where does the responsibility lie for youth? You know, the county would ostensibly be responsible for the mental health services for youth, whi- which were brought up quite extensively in the, um, SacKids First presentation. And we know that COVID has created a lot of stress for kids. I see it in my own daughter. Uh, but that's a one-time event, and that really calls for a one-time solution to get out of the direct effects of the pandemic, which we will have money coming from the federal government to address. Uh, the mayor said that, that the question is being called. I, I contend that it's been called twice before in Measure Y and Measure G, and the voters rejected it. Nonetheless, if, you know, we do invest a lot in our youth, and I agree with both Eric and, and My, that we need to have absolute data on what we currently invest in programs that our youth facing through YIPSY and other programs, how much we spend on nonprofits, and an indication of the efficacy of all those programs. And until we have that kind of data and discussion, and a discussion on who is responsible for which piece of youth services, be it the school district or the county or the city, or if we do, as My suggests, take a regional approach, until we have that data, we, we don't have enough money in our budget to create sustainable ones for homelessness, for fixing our roads. We do have a fund for, uh, you know, our, our stormwater drainage fund, but it's not sustainable. It's failing. The fact of the matter is, our budget is limited, and every time we look at our budget, we have to set priorities with our pocketbook. So some people would contend that we have not prioritized youth enough. I think that that may be the case, but until I see the data to show me and guide me in that, I can't say it unequivocally, but what I do know is that partitioning money for certain projects, if we did that for everything that needs to have a sustainable fund, we'd be broken in a heartbeat. Uh, you know, we just are not generating that kind of revenue to sustain everything that we want to sustain. We do an awful lot of decision-making with one-time funds. We seek grants constantly for our infrastructure repairs. These things are all important to our constituents. But again, you know, I'd have to say, uh, that the voters have already looked at this issue twice. I know Councilmember Ashby and I worked together and tried to create a metric, tried to figure out, how much do we spend on youth? What percentage of the budget is it? Is that a reasonable percentage? And we took that on, on ourselves, on the fly, to, uh, counter, uh, the, the logic or illogic of a ballot measure. If we're to move forward with any kind of sustainable funding for youth, it has to be data-driven, and I think even Jay would agree with me on that. And I think he's working with Claudia and others to, to pull all that together, and I love that work. I agree with all of you that direct investment in our youth pays dividends, and it is essential. But as always, this council has to take it into consideration with all of the programs that we need, we need to manage to serve our constituents. It's a big budget, it's a big responsibility, but the point I really want to drive home is not everything is the responsibility of the city. We are in the region, and the county and the school districts bear substantial responsibilities for the benefit of our youth. And we have to take that into consideration too. So if this comes to budget and audit, I hope that that will be a big piece of the discussion. But if this should find its way to a council for a decision, uh, there better be a, a lot of data attached to this. And as My said, some kind of plan for performance metrics, which frankly, I think as a city, we fail completely in that regard. We just don't have decent performance metrics for any of the one-time funding that we toss out there. I think we could do a lot better job with it. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I, I wanted to say one thing. I'm sorry, Councilmember. The one part of your comment that I don't agree with, Councilmember Harris, is I, I don't think I would characterize nearly sixty-six percent of the Sacramento public supporting Measure Y as a rejection of the idea that we ought to have a permanent source of funding for, uh, young people. I mean, that's a, the anomaly of the California constitution, the two-thirds, the, the supermajority requirement. The majority have clearly said that we ought to have a permanent source for young people.
Well, can I just have a moment to rebut?
Of course.
Our laws are our laws, and we work within that frame. Um, you know, it was rejected by the voters, so it didn't move forward. Now, it's, you can surmise, uh, you know, that a majority of the people voted for it, but yet it still didn't pass. And we live within our laws. We also have to live within our means, Mr. Mayor. And our budget forecast shows an awful lot of red coming up. So, you know, we just have to be realistic. If, if we have a lot of money, I, I would prefer to spend a lot more on youth. I would prefer to spend a lot more on a lot of things, but we have to be realistic with our dollars.
To be continued. Okay. Councilmember Vang, I, I have a lot of other members in the queue, but go ahead.
I'll keep this short. So I think the first thing, uh, Councilmember Harris, I appreciate you that we have common ground on the data piece. I absolutely agree, making sure we have quality programs. I do just want to add, when I talk about regional approach, it, I will also say it is our collective responsibility. It is the school district, it is the county, but it is also the city's responsibility to make sure that we're serving our young people. Um, and so it needs to be a collective effort. The other piece I would say, and I actually, I, Mayor, I agree with you on this, that there is a segment of the community that did vote for it, and it didn't pass. And I would also say the reason why it didn't pass, because money was thrown against it, and you were, or folks were organizing against young people. Um, that's another reason why it didn't pass. There's also that political piece, but I think on the ground, we know that this is what Sacramento wants. This is what the youth is asking, this is what their parents are asking, this is what our neighborhood is asking, and I look forward to working with our young people to make sure that happens.
Very good. Thank you. Let's, thank you very much. Councilmember Laloie.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, Monica and Dee, thank you so much for that report. Um, it's very exciting when you see the, the youth getting in front of the, the council and, uh, presenting their case. So, uh, regardless of the outcome, um, you're on the right path, and you should challenge the system, um, every day. So I, I truly, uh, commend you, uh, um, on, uh, on being here today. Um, with that said, I have to kind of agree with my colleague, uh, Councilmember Vang, that some data related to some of these organizations and what they have accomplished, um, within the last year um, is mu- much, much needed. And also to kind of take that one step further is the, the effect that, um, SacKids has had on each district in particular. So, um, we, we received numerous calls, and, um, unfortunately, I didn't get, I didn't hear a call from some of the districts. So now the question comes, where do we concentrate? What districts would do we concentrate? What was the feedback from each district? Um, and, and that's, that's a data that I think, uh, my colleague, uh, uh, my colleagues are referring to. Um, I also do agree that, yes, um, the city has to be very careful on, on the budget. But anyone that, um, knows myself and my platform, I'm all about the youth. Because let's face it, um, myself, there's not a whole lot that, you know, can affect me. It's the youth that can affect tomorrow. Um, not to, you know, I don't want to make any of my colleagues upset, but individuals my age, we're done. You're the future of our city, and you're the future of our country. So I do believe that we need to have funding for our youth, but it has to be a calculated funding. We have to see where that money is going and how it's being spent. And another note is that when I look at your, uh, stakeholder list, again, there's some questions that come up on how effective have some of these stakeholders have been when it comes to youth? And is their current work and, and, um, is it providing, uh, a conflict of interest? So when I see a, a stakeholder that has direct relationship with the cannabis industry, then I question, well, wh- 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 what is the message that we're sending to, to the youth on, on this? So a little bit more data would be definitely wonderful, in particular to each district, uh, how effective that, uh, we've been. And, um, I do believe that the city needs to be involved with creating a funding in connection with the county and school districts for, um, for the youth. So again, thank you so much for that wonderful presentation. These were some of my questions and my concerns.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to echo my thanks to the SacKids First Coalition for that presentation and, and all the work you've done to advocate for the spending, but also because of how you do this work with the youth. You know, I got started as, as thirteen years old in Kern County, doing work advocating for students at my age, and I know how transformational that is. So I just want to recognize that you're practicing what you preach and that the, the youth that I've interacted with, who've worked on Measure G and on other work. I mean, it's a transformational experience you're doing as you're also advocating for this funding. I just want to recognize and, and thank you for, for doing that work. I, I understand that budgets are limited. Obviously, we'd always like to have unlimited amounts of money. Wouldn't it be great? Um, if we could just figure out how to make money appear for everything we want to pay for. But when I first got started as an advocate, I did K-12 education advocacy with the statewide student coalition. And when I take them to the Capitol to advocate for the budget, we'd sit down usually at ten PM with like, I don't know, some fast food or whatever we could get them where they were, and I'd say, budgets are about priorities. Budgets are about priorities. If I gave you money right now, how you spent that money would reflect your priorities. If you had an urgent need, you would use it for that need. If you had some shoes you really wanted, you would use it to buy those shoes. But this is ultimately a question of priorities. And when twenty-three percent of our population is under the age of eighteen, but they're representing on average about five percent of our budget, I would say that our priorities are out of line, um, with what our community needs. And this has been a consistent call, not just from those of us who've been engaged with students as youth, with youth, um, for years, but it's something we know in the research and data, that the more we invest in our youth, the more that comes back to benefit us as a community. Because public safety is so much more than just what we're spending right now on police and fire. It's about the prevention. We did that work last year, right? Like, it's about investing in youth, it's about investing in prevention, it's about giving people opportunities to thrive and be happy and have their needs met in the way that makes most sense for them. And so I argue that our budget is out of whack, and I'm going to join many of my colleagues on this call who are saying that we are going to fight for more funding in this budget as just the beginning of hopefully the trajectory to getting that permanent source of funding. It's hard with budgets, because by nature, you know, year to year, things change, and, but I think we can get close. I think we've got the, the tools and the right, um, resources here locally that we can figure this problem out. And we can figure it out in a way that increases transparency, that gives people confidence and, and excitement about the programming that's happening. And, and to that point, I want to ask for a change, a potential consideration in the resolution around who is involved in this oversight and in making recommendations and in informing these plans, because I think it should be our youth commission. Um, they have public meetings, and they are representatives of the community. They provide a really meaningful space, because that is something I've heard from some providers, is that they understand all these great conversations are happening, but they don't know how to plug in. So I think like, really working in partnership with our youth commission to create that space and really ensure that that's the place that folks can come with ideas and needs and feedback, um, and they are really working to inform with community stakeholders like SacKids First, the recommendations that we then vote on as a council, and really elevate their expertise, um, in that space. But, um, I, I, there's not enough we could spend on youth, in my opinion, um, to make sure they have everything that they need in our community. And, and I would just like to reiterate that for People's Budgets, and then my colleague, Councilmember Laloie, just mentioned, how do we know what people in other districts think? And there has been a lot of work done on this, not just with SacKids First and the work you've all done to, to poll and to research and to survey communities across our city, but there's also a group like the People's Budget, and they've surveyed thousands of Sacramentans. And you want to know what the preponderance of those folks says. They want more funding to go to youth, they want more funding to go to mental health. And so I think if we did a quick poll of our community right now, as was mentioned, there is nobody who questions youth funding. They might question how, um, and they might question transparency and, and all those different measures of how do we know we're doing it well? But, but nobody questions, we need to do more on this. And so I'm really looking forward to, to whatever resolution or motion that Council Vice Mayor Shenair puts forward today, and how I can continue to work to support, to make this happen as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, uh, Mayor Protem Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some thoughts on this one as well. And, uh, first of all, uh, I, I agree in, in large part with my colleagues here that we can and should do some additional things for youth. But I've been on this council a long time, and having these conversations in a bit of a vacuum is never great. So the idea that we put this, we have this in a larger context with the budget is the right thing to do. I still think you'll rise to the top. I still think the kids will be fine, and I think we'll be able to do something good. But here are things that I would ask be included of our city staff and Mayor of you. And Councilmember Shenair, if you're getting ready to make a list, I want to be able to make sure that the funding that we, if we're talking about, and what I think we're talking about, is some type of reliable dedicated funding source that can go to nonprofits. Uh, that's great, but we need to be really clear about what that's going to be used for and the measurables, and that it is citywide, and that it is across a broad socioeconomic spectrum, that it includes things like the LGBTQ community, that it goes all the way from District One and District Two to all the way down to District Seven and Eight, and it's everything in between, and that all kinds of kids in our city, uh, across all kinds of ages, preschool through early college are, are impacted. That it doesn't hyper-focus in one corner of the city or in, on one group of the city, and that all, all kids have an opportunity to benefit. And at the same time that we're, you know, implementing that type of the data and tracking and the measurable performance metrics and citywide and socioeconomic diversity, we also need to make sure that folks have a real grasp on what we are doing in the city, and that those programs are funded as well. Because every year that I've been here, Fourth R has needed additional funding. And when you talk about the needs of kids and parents and families, they're just. And parents and families, there just is no greater need than after-school care and daycare and childcare. And if we can't make sure that that's well-funded, there are two schools in District Six. That have required a $2 million cover for at least the last six years on Fourth R. And right now there are issues with Fourth R with Sac City, but there's also inequity. Because Natomas Unified is paying for things that Sac City is not, and Elk Grove is doing it differently and. Twin Rivers and we, and so this approach that we, that my, that Councilmember Vang has suggested. That we take a regional approach and that we include the school districts, to me is very important. Because I think we need those school districts to be on board. They need to participate in this as well. They are the center of the universe for youth in our city. And we can supplement and help and we can be a part of that, but they need to equally share in that responsibility. And in some of the districts, the city of Sacramento provides a lot more resources and a lot more services and a lot more staff. Than other districts. And, uh, I think sometimes that is inequitable. I also want to make sure that Parks is at the table. I don't want to have a conversation around youth. That doesn't involve our youth and Parks enrichment division. They have an entire division that does youth work. They do Fourth R, they do community centers, they do the aquatics programs, they do the summer programming. Uh, they need to be here. They need to be involved in the conversation. And as a council, we need to be able to look at what they're doing as well in terms of priorities. Do we want to increase, uh, STEAM programming over the summer? Do we want to increase Fourth R? Do we want to, do we really want to get rid of before-school programming? Do we want to invest in more in our libraries? The libraries are the front in our community for literacy programs. How are we doing there? Many of our libraries, including in District Eight in particular, are leading the way on feeding kids. And, uh, and so we want to make sure that they're well-funded and, and that they have the improvements that they need. We want to include that in this discussion. We want to make sure that if we're going to keep paying, for example, for the free youth rides for RT. That we make it an ongoing funding source and not something that is a conversation that happens outside of other times. When we're talking about things that we're doing for youth. I personally have a youth action corps that has a thousand kids in it out of District One. And probably a handful of kids from District Three and Four as well. And every time we talk about youth, this group says, hey, we need to do that citywide. So I'm officially today going to say, ask the mayor and the city manager. To put the youth action corps on for a presentation to the city council. This is time for you all to decide if you want to take that citywide or not. I, I am tired of it coming up every year and every year and then we do or we don't do it. It's okay with me. It already exists in, in District One. But it is a really good program that reaches a thousand kids a year, just in one district at a pretty reasonable cost. And is heavily supported by our Parks Department. And I know they have a level of comfort with it. Also, Summer at City Hall, the cost of that and how that plays into this programming and how that is funded for years to come. Councilmember Shenier, you won't, you won't be here forever. And let's make sure Summer at City Hall survives your tenure, if that's what you want to do. And that it is funded. Uh, you all have repeatedly said, we want to engage the youth commission and add more youth to our. To our various, uh, committees and commissions. And I support that. We've supported it at PMPE. We need to continue to do that, but that too should be a part of this conversation. In our homelessness RFPs, we have been reaching youth and we have prioritized youth. The entire site in District Two with tiny homes is for TAE, transition age youth. So we need to include that in the conversation as well, as well as an entire program that Robin Rose Hamer is bringing forward. U Center on hosting LGBTQ youth that, that are addressed, that are facing homelessness. Those things should be included too. That is the way we also broaden our socio-economic spectrum on youth and who we're serving. SHRA has a robust program for youth and they should be included in this too, because that is also our work in our funding. And the RFPs for pop-ups, for outreach, for the various task force things that I know Councilmember Jennings has championed. For the last eight years at least, he has been fighting for these items. Need to be included in this discussion and either have ongoing funding or be prioritized because those things are working. Uh, I think a robust conversation, uh, it doesn't have, for me, I'm sort of with Councilmember Vang on this. Uh, strategic plans are not my favorite, but if that's what we want to do and we want to do some mapping, fine, fine. But we need to be really inclusive. And I want to thank the people who came forward today, Rob and Monica, your crew. Because you're helping us have a much broader discussion. I know that you're advocating for the piece that. Provides ongoing funding to youth out in the community, but I also know that you care deeply, especially because I know Robin well. You care deeply about these programs for youth like Fourth R and the, the community centers and all of those things too. And you are helping facilitate that broader discussion for us. And that is all equally meaningful to acquiring ongoing funding for, for nonprofits outside of the city. Which I, I'm in favor of as long as it is measured and data-driven and then we can hold people accountable. And then one last thing here from me. We have some people on staff in, in the city who do great work and we should always include them in these conversations. And we should, and not just through, by way of the council member. I mean, they should always be at the table with us. Talking about the things that, that they're doing in our city that are working really well, so that we know what we can expand upon. We also have members of the community who have been at this for so long and have been doing this work so well. And we really need to trust them and include them. Robin is one of those people. Robin ran the windshelter. Now she's helping the LGBT Q Center. I know her as a person who was our regional area president for PTA. She has always been doing this work. So having someone like her help us, for example, make sure that things are citywide. Would, would really get us a lot farther in this process. So those are my comments, Mayor. I, I don't hear any disagreement against, uh, amongst my colleagues. I actually hear, uh, unity in wanting to move forward. But we do need to make sure that it isn't at the cost of something else important in the city like Fourth R. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Shenier.
I think you have Mr. Jennings first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll be brief, I'll be brief because my colleagues have said a lot of what I want to say. Um, but I think one of the callers said it best for me. First, I want to thank Sack Kids First for bringing this presentation. I want to compliment them on how well organized it was and how clear their presentation was. And involving a lot of different people in making the presentation. So. I, I just want to acknowledge them for the work that they've done in bringing this to us today. And all my colleagues on, on the dais, uh, I think we're pretty much saying the same thing. Uh, when we invest in the most vulnerable, it uplifts everyone. And right now we're looking at investing in our youth and our children. And I think that's the biggest investment, the best investment that we can make. I, I don't want to go down the road that, uh, Councilmember Liloey said, because I, I hope I still got a lot more time left. But, uh, he's right in that, in making that investment with our children will pay dividends much longer than making that investment in he and I. Um, I just wanted to let the co, my colleagues know that we, we can figure this thing out. Uh, and they put a presentation, they put a slide up that talked about Santa Cruz, Richmond, Oakland and San Francisco. And they have figured it out. And it has not something that they figured out yesterday. In some of those cities, it's been going on for a long time. And they've figured out a way to make that happen. And I'm convinced that we can too, uh, just like we do in setting policy. And move away from this one year, one-time funding model that we continue to invest in. Because it doesn't give us the kind of results that we want. It's hard to even measure effective results when you have one-time funding. You have to have sustained funding. And I learned that from the James Erdmine Foundation when they came in. And gave seven years of funding to the city of Sacramento so that we could look at after-school, uh, enrichment. And we were able to take that model and really show, uh, significant results to the point that it developed a white paper that's making a difference. I agree with everyone. It talked about involving, uh, the youth commission, uh, YPC, our school districts. All the different resources that can come to the table. So we can get a data-driven, uh, system in place that we can measure. And make sure that we get the data to understand the impact that COVID-19 has had on our, on our, on our children. Uh, the impact on distance learning, the impact on poverty, um, all the different things that we need to be looking at. In order to make sure that our children are moving forward and not moving backwards. So I, I, I'm a, I'm a supporter right now of finding a way to make this happen. And, and, and I just want to put my hat in the ring that says, we together can make something like this happen. We can be a frontrunner as opposed to following behind the other cities that have already done it. We should be setting the model for how this is done and investing in our youth. And it's not too late to do that. So. I'm, I, I, I want to move forward with this.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. Uh, now I'll turn it over to Vice Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, first of all, I, I, I wanted to just add, excuse me, add my thanks to Sack Kids First, Monica. And Dee, and then also of course, Robin. Um, you guys did a great job. And, uh, appreciate the work that you've done since the last election and before. Um, you have kept the fire going on all of this and you have been thoughtful in what you're doing. Um, and I'm so proud of the work that Sack Kids First, along with Youth Forward and a number of the other organizations who participated. Um, have done. You, you guys have been great. Um, I also, I just want to note and say thank you. The youth commission has been involved. The Sack Kids First presented to the youth commission, um, earlier this week or last week. And, uh, every step of the way on, on many of the things that, that we've worked on together. Um, free rides, the public safety resolution and others. Um, we've gone to the youth commission first and we've gone to the youth commission last to make sure that they were involved. I want to do a little bit of context and then, uh, talk about a couple of things. And I want to really appreciate all of my colleagues because I don't disagree with anything anyone has said. Um, all of those pieces are important and, and Howard, I hope that, um, you got it all. I've got my notes. And, um, I'm sure that we'll be comparing and going forward. But I, I do want to note some of the progress that we've made because this conversation could not have happened or would not have happened five or six years ago. Um, it just wasn't, it wasn't in the cards. But since then, we've done a number of things as a city that have shown a lot of leadership around the youth agenda. Um, we developed our youth, uh, youth development campaign plan. Um, we will send copies out to everyone because I think it's still very pertinent in what we're doing. Really talking about the assets and skill sets that young people need to be successful. And how it's important that everything we do, everything we fund or operate includes those assets. Um, we reorganized a department to have, uh, uh, a division of youth. I'll note that LA, the city of Los Angeles just got a big award for creating a youth department. We were a number of years ahead of them in doing that. Um, we created a position within the city manager's office that when the, uh, lane is filled and that. A great job looking at youth policy so that it can be integrated in other things we do. We did the Free Rides for Youth, which has been very successful. And we had a, a national evaluator come, come in and take a look at it. And the results have been overwhelmingly positive even through COVID. Um, we did the public safety resolution as a number of people have, have suggested. Uh, we have youth slots now on three of our boards and commissions. Um, those three were picked by the youth commission. Um, uh, Ms. Piper Pell, one of our youth commissioners led that effort. And then most recently, um, putting out both the $6 million in care funds and the $6 million in funds from, um. From mid-year. And I want to note again, and I've said this before, we had over eighty youth providing organizations. Who were involved in developing the strategies that, that formed the RFP for those funds. Um, and many of the, the staff members from my colleagues' offices attended those meetings and participated. In what I think is, is the beginning of a citywide strategy. Um, even with all the, these are all pieces of the puzzle and they're all important. And I, and I'm proud of everything the city has accomplished. And there are many more pieces to that puzzle. Um, but what we do, really do need to do is look comprehensively and holistically. Uh, what do we want? What does success look like for our young people? What do we want to measure along the way? Uh, do we do this regionally? Do we do this by age group? There's lots of ways to cut this and we can, we can cut it in many ways. But thinking about what we should look like to be a, a youth-friendly city, what does that really mean? And what does it mean for young people to have the, the skills and competencies they need to be successful in school and career and in life? And we've really never had that conversation. Uh, we can hearken back to Larry Carr on this one saying, what are the goals that we have? And what are the goals that we have for young people here? And while we've done a lot of good things, we have a lot of great programs. Um, I think YPC has done really a wonderful job through the pandemic with their class program and others. Really trying to utilize what we have to get out there. Um, but we, we need to do more. We need to think about how all these pieces fit together. Even on the mental health and, and Jeff is right, the pandemic has certainly exacerbated the situation. But our kids were having mental health issues before the pandemic and they will continue to after the pandemic. How do we recognize that? And what do we do about it? And how do we work with the county? We are currently in the process of creating a youth mental health advisory board with the county, with SCOE. So that we can have young people who are telling us what, what we need to know. And, you know, it's, it's really up to us to listen to all of that. So that's kind of how we got to where we are today. This is another piece in the puzzle. And again, I want to thank everybody for the conversation. I, I think what we need to do in the direction I'd like to, to provide along with what everyone has said. Because again, I don't disagree with any of it and want to leave it to the city manager to, to sort it out. And, and my office is certainly willing to help any way we can. And I know a lot of you, uh, will offer the same. Uh, is we do need, we do need a comprehensive plan, whether we call it a strategic plan or work plan, whatever you want to do. We need to look at this and back map into what the data needs to be and how we collect it. And, and what we're funding and the efficacy of the programs that we fund. Whether we operate them or whether community-based organizations. And, and I, I'm not talking about specific programs at this point. Um, I think what we need to do again is, is create the system and design the system. And that's what, that's what Sack Kids First was talking about. Everyone kind of goes back to the funding piece, which is extremely important. But the other two components of what they talked about, the data and the strategy piece are as important for the sustainability. And knowing what we fund, how we fund, who we should fund and what, and what we need to do. So, um, so the direction that I want to provide is, is directing the city manager, whether we do it internally or bring in some help. Um, but to, to start developing a, an overall strategic plan for youth for the city. And make sure that we connect that to all the pieces. What's the fire department doing? What's the police department doing? What's the city clerk's office doing? We've had a lot of these discussions. We've had discussions about, you know, when we did measure why, we, we looked at one percent of the budget being spent on youth. I think Angelique and Jeff talked about seven percent, but we need to know exactly what we are spending and how we define that. Um, so that needs to be part of a plan. What do, what kind of return on investment are we getting when we're investing in community-based organizations? What do we get when we, when we invest in our own people through YPC to provide programming? Who should be doing what? I think those are all really important things. And how should we govern ourselves? And how do we involve young people through the youth commission and other places? Um, to be part of that governance structure. The data piece that, that Councilmember Vang was talking about is incredibly important. Because we will, we will throw money away without doing it. And I would argue, um, you know, the performance metrics. It's, it's incredibly important. Uh, again, whether we're, we're providing funding for a community-based organization. Or whether we're funding ourselves, we need those metrics. We don't have them in most of our departments and, and we continue to spend money. So I would put this as important, if not more important than anything else we're doing. Um, so I, I'm happy to work with all of my colleagues through the budget process to make sure we have enough funds. So that young people have that, what they need to be successful. And we need to take the long-term view because every investment we make in a young person today is money that we don't have to spend. Uh, on the cost of bad results in the future. Um, we should absolutely look at what programs we have and what districts that, that are working well. What are the metrics that we're using for them? And how do we measure that? Um, there are others that provide services. How, how can we work better with them? Whether it's the city libraries, whether it's the school districts or whether it's the county. Um, I'm hoping that the work we're currently doing with the county on a mental health board. Is providing a roadmap for how we can work better together with them on youth issues. But they don't, they don't have a tremendous amount of programming in that area. I think we can do better with that. So those, those are kind of the pieces. Um, uh, I, I also, Mayor would ask that you. For, for the foreseeable future and working with Sack Kids First, that you appoint an ad hoc committee of the council. To be able to work with that so we can really focus in on all these issues. So it's not just, I, I don't want it to just be myself or, or the mayor's office. I know you and I have been meeting with Sack Kids First for over a year now, but. But, but I, I think it's time that we had something formal that they can interact with on an ongoing basis. And that we make sure we dedicate the time to do. So with that, that's, that's the direction I'd like to provide along with all the pieces that have been mentioned here because they're all important. So thank, I appreciate.
So, if I may, it's a receive and file item, but I think what you just did, Vice Mayor Chenier, is very well sort of summarize not only your own point of view, but what your colleagues expressed as well. And if everybody is quote okay with the way Councilmember Chenier, Vice Mayor Chenier summarized it, let that be the direction then without requiring a, 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 a formal motion. And City Manager, I think, yeah, the key piece of it is one thing is a strategic plan that is data, that is data-driven and where, where our investments are backed up by where the need is the greatest and where the impact will be the greatest. And yes, not tilting between the public and, and nonprofit programs necessarily, but having a city where we take the best of all are, are all of the offerings out there and, and we, and we scale. And on the ad hoc issue, I'm happy to do that because I would like to invest more members in this very important discussion, especially as we approach 2022 and follow through on our promise to consider a ballot measure. So.
Mayor, if I could really quickly, the only thing I, I want to say is, and I, I do want a strategic plan. I wanted to look at sustainability in the long term of what we're doing and even measure this thing over, you know, a period of time. So as we're investing in young people now, Eric said it. When we did measure why, a lot of those kids are now in college or, or hopefully doing something really important. But I don't want to wait for a strategic plan to get started on a lot of these other pieces, particularly.
Understood.
We need to do, we need to build this plane as it's running down the runway.
Like, like the homeless master plan, we're not waiting until the completion of the homeless master plan to establish safe ground and, and shelter and all the other good works that are currently going on in the city. We have to do, we have to do it all at the same time. Councilmember Vang, did you have anything to add?
I did. I actually wanted Howard to repeat back what the next steps are because I just want clarity for our young folks and the public in terms of what the next action steps are.
Thank you, Councilmember Vang. So what, what I think is that this is very timely. All these discussions about youth programming in the context of the FY22 budget. There's a series of report backs that are going to come back. Some are going to be before this council. Others are going to be like off-agenda memos. But I do think that this discussion about a strategic plan is critical because we do a lot throughout the city. The other theme I heard very clearly is metrics. So to be clear, we have a performance management program that we've actually put on hiatus for probably about a year now because our teams have been all hands on deck dealing with the pandemic, with this coronavirus relief fund dispersment and all the contracting that went along with the first $89 million. And we had teed up a couple of agendas ago to do a presentation. I think that really is going to help shed some light on some of the things that we are doing. As it relates to the youth programming directly, all of our contracts have these deliverables that we measure against before we disperse funds. Now, there needs to be more consistency. There needs to be some focus on what our goals are. And this is to Vice Mayor Chenier's point is that what is it that we want to accomplish? What is, what are the outcomes that we want to see as a result? So I, I would love to be able to work with this ad hoc, the mayor will point to help refine this and kind of bring these items back systematically before the council. But the items that we're talking about, kind of the lower hanging fruit, will be part of the FY22 budget that those hearings are going to be kind of starting as early as later this month. So I don't know if you want to have a, a conversation about offline on some of the things that were brought up because there are many things that came up here. I'm happy to do that. But I think that encompasses all the issues that were brought up as part of the conversation tonight.
Mayor, I think my one, Councilmember Vang wants to comment and I just want one, one thing I wanted to add.
Okay.
The manager, I, I, I would like to work with you on coming back with a presentation on the Action Corps.
Yeah, that's fine. We ought to be bringing forward, you know, all the very good practices and approaches in our city. So, good. Councilmember Vang, did you have another comment?
No, I think, I think that's good. I, I look forward to what Howard and staff is going to bring back. And I hear folks on the strategic plan. I think there are some things that we could do now, like Councilmember Chenier said. And Howard, it's really great to hear that there was, there was going to be a presentation around metrics and just how the city is measuring. I would just add that I think right now, I mean, I don't know what it will take because I know every department functions, right? I, I think it's important to start collecting that data. I don't know what it would take to be able to get to that point. But we have to be able to transition and start collecting data at all department levels and disaggregated data. So I look forward to you bringing that back on what that would look like. Because I think it's something that we could begin doing now. So.
What, what I'd like to do is give you a preview of the metrics that we are collecting and making sure that they're hitting the points that you want because we collect thousands and thousands of data points here. And it's over the course of, we have a probably about a three-years data set that we're looking at. And you know, some of it is going to be helpful for some of these discussions. Others are more just like workload measures that were used to manage the organization. So I'd love, I'll set some time up with you and give you a preview of what that looks like.
Yeah, okay.
And I think, um, City Manager, it's like qualitative and quantitative, right? Where it's like, it's also the feedback from the youth and from the families who are talking about where there are gaps and where there are needs that go a little bit beyond maybe what we're able to collect on a day-to-day basis. So.
Agreed, agreed.
Yeah.
So to the Kids First Coalition and our speakers again here today, thank you very, very much. I hope you leave this hearing feeling the strength behind you, beside you as we march towards 2022, not to wait just for a ballot measure, but to use these next budget cycles as, as well as the, the federal stimulus funding and the new opportunities we have to continue backing up our, our our good words with real action and real dollars. So thank you.
Thank you again for having us. We really appreciate it. And we look forward to working with you all.
Very good. Thank you. All right, let us move on now to item 11, which is the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission Recommendations. Before I introduce SCPRC Chair, Sacramento Police Review Commission Chair Mario Guerrero, I want to just make a couple of opening comments to sort of frame the discussion in front of us. This, the last item was a receive and file. This is a receive and provide direction. And so in my opinion, today's hearing is intended to solidify the strong and important role of our Police Review Commission and to continue the push for smart public safety reform in our city. What is the role of the Police Review Commission? Well, it has many roles, but to highlight a few. Their role is to ensure that the voice of the community is always heard when it comes to issues, both policy and, and in incidents, anything that occurs between public safety, not just police, but police and fire and our community. And their role is also very importantly to recommend to the city council and to the city management and to the public policies and, and policy and programmatic changes that define smart reform. And I think it is fair to say as we reflect a little bit, that for several years since the establishment of this commission or at least the reworking of the commission, the aftermath of the Joseph Mann shooting, that the role of the commission has not always been so clear. And let's be honest about it. We have, we, we have an interesting system of governance in, in, in Sacramento. We've got an opposite director. We now have an inspector general. We have a commission. We have a city manager. We have a police chief. We have a mayor. We have a city council. And the lines are often a little bit confusing. And that lack of clarity has not really been fair to the members of the commission, not fair to the department, not fair to the public. Today, I'm going to ask the city council to provide direction by reviewing the commission's 2018, 2019 recommendations and actually weighing in to say yes, no, as is or with modification. And then to do the same for some of the initial 2020 recommendations made by the Police Review Commission. Now, Mario Guerrero, the Chair, Chair Guerrero is going to present to you the key recommendations that are not necessarily inclusive of everything that is in all this committee and subcommittee reports. But I want us to take a big leap forward and a step by considering what Mr. Guerrero, Chair Guerrero is going to present. And then on the stuff that isn't covered, to come back and determine how we want to maybe take up some of those even more difficult and or controversial issues. So that's just a little stage setting here. And I turn it over to Chair Guerrero, who really has spent innumerable hours working on behalf of his community on these sets of issues. And I'm very appreciative. I know we all are. And the same is true of your commission as well. These are volunteers. These are people who most have, you know, full-time jobs and, and a lot of responsibilities and they're taking this on because they care about the community and we're appreciative. So I turn it over to you and take us through your PowerPoint.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Steinberg and council members for allowing me to be here with you today. I am the Chair of the Sacramento Community Police Review Commission. And as Mayor Steinberg stated, I, I will be presenting to you today some of the 2018, 2019, and 2020 Sacramento Community Police Review Commission Recommendations. I do want to just reiterate that this presentation does not include all of the recommendations because there are many and we know that. There's a lot of work that, that went into these, a lot of passion, a lot of hours. But we're not presenting on all of them because if we did, we'd be here all afternoon. If you thought the previous presentation and, you know, length of the, of the, of the discussions was long, this would be longer if we did that. So I would refer you to the full recommendations submitted to council if you're interested in looking at those. Let's see, the presentation does, will cover a number of recommendations that SACPD and the commission have not come to agreement on and that the city can take action. So I'm going to start off by sharing my screen and a PowerPoint. So, excuse me for a second. So the first, I'm just going to get right into it. The first recommendation that we were putting forward is to adopt a higher standard for use of force here in Sacramento. That specifically would be the language there. A peace officer is justified in using deadly force upon another person only as a last resort and when reasonable alternatives have been exhausted or are not feasible and the officer reasonably believes based on the totality of the circumstances that such force is necessary. Now here's some context. As many of you know, AB 392 was adopted in 2019 and it changed the standard for use of force in California from reasonable to necessary. This recommendation is both to increase the standard of use of force from necessary to last resort and to adopt a clear definition of the last resort standard. This would require SACPD to make appropriate changes to the use of force general order. Let me mention a couple of jurisdictions that have adopted this standard. San Francisco, California is one. A further out jurisdiction, Camden County, New Jersey. So there are jurisdictions that have adopted this last resort standard. Key question that you might be asking yourself because it's come up a lot, can we do this? The answer is yes. We have both heard both internally and externally from legal perspectives that this is absolutely within the authority of the city to adopt a higher standard than what the state prescribes. The city can adopt this higher standard today if, if you so wish to. Let's see. So that is the first recommendation. I'm going to go to the next one and I'm going to pause at the end. There's five slides in this section and I'll pause for questions and to see if you may want to take action at that point.
No, I want you to go through the whole thing.
Okay, perfect. And we'll go right through. Recommendation, second recommendation, this is still part of the 2018, 2019. Adopt the objectively reasonable force definition language from post. So here in front of you, you have the language from SACPD. It clearly states an objective standard for force viewed from the perspective in a, of an objectively reasonable peace officer without the benefit of 2020 hindsight and based on the totality of the circumstances known to or perceived by the officer at the time. The commission recommended the addition of this additional sentence, which is the number one factor in determining objective reasonableness is whether an immediate threat to the safety of the officer or another exists. This is specifically post-language. So I want to make a distinction here. We just in the previous slide, talk about, talked about the overall standard for use of force. Now, in this slide, we are switching to a critical definition related to the objectivity of an officer when they decide to use force. The commission is recommending that this definition include the language used by post. Post is the Commission on Peace Officer Standards and Training, Training in their learning domains. They use this language specifically in their learning domains. We ask that this sentence be added to SACPD's definition of objectively reasonable force. I do want to highlight that I, or point out that I highlighted the term immediate because previous, i- in the documentation I provided, we, the commission provided to the commission, I mean, to the council, we use a, the word imminent incorrectly and we double and triple check that the correct word is immediate. The next, next slide and recommendation. The city shall review and consider Sacramento Community Police Review Commission Recommendations by April of each calendar year. The report shall be placed on the council agenda as an action item so the city council has the ability to approve the commission's recommendations. As you know, we are covering 2018, 2019, and 2020 recommendations today. And prior to today, there has been no vote on commission recommendation. The commission and more importantly, the community, I think, would greatly appreciate a clear process of consideration.
Keep going.
Yes. The next recommendation, SACPD must give the commission the opportunity to review and comment before SACPD adopts or amends a general order dealing with body worn cameras, foot pursuit, use of force, discipline, or any general order being considered by the commission. The chief and the departments retain final authority over the issuance of any order. Some of you know, oftentimes in the past, the, a general order will have been updated without the commission's knowledge or even as we are working on it. And so this addresses this issue. In this section, there are two items that we identified as possibly having bargain, bargaining issues or being issues that need to be bargained. One, the first is requiring an ethnic studies class for new SACPD recruits. And the second is drug testing of officers after a use of force incident. For the ethnic studies recommendation, there are many ways to implement. Some are no cost and some might have a cost. It's up to you all to consider that.
So Mario?
Yes.
Just, just to be clear, and I know you said this. These are our recommendations, but they would have to be collective, your recommendations, but they would have to be collectively bargained. So if we say yes to this, it, the expectation, it doesn't become the, the way that it is. It has to be bargained.
That is correct. As someone who has worked with, with labor and is a, a, a union member currently, you know, the, the person, you're, the hiring authority sets things on the table that they would like and then they bargain hard for them. And this is not, I, I don't think, the commission doesn't think that this, these are unreasonable things, but yes, they would have to be bargained. Any other questions or should I continue?
Keep going.
Okay. So we're going to move on to, those were the the top 2018, 2019 recommendations. I am now moving on to 2020 recommendations. And again, for this part, just want to point out that we had three adhocks, accountability, discipline, mental health, and an internal ad hoc committee. So I split up the slides into these three. And again, this presentation does not include all recommendations. If it did, we'd be here all afternoon. So I would refer you to the full recommendation submitted to council. But here are some of the top ones. So first one, under accountability, discipline, ad hoc committee. Recommendation is to create a discipline matrix that clearly and transparently informs the public and peace officers of the consequences of various types and levels of misconduct. Many other cities provide this guidance. There are many jurisdictions with a discipline matrix. It helps provide clarity to peace officers and the public and it helps ensure equitable consequences for officers. Jurisdictions that have adopted a discipline matrix include San Diego, San, South Bend, Indiana, Madison, Wisconsin, and San Francisco. So some local and some further out. Next recommendation, continuing on under accountability discipline. For under the inspector general, the commission should receive, if requested, access to all information that can be made available to the public via SB 1421. This was the bill that was adopted at the at the state level, of course, giving access to certain types of records. Next recommendation, Sacramento Police Department should analyze the vehicle traffic data, stop data and report to the council on identified racial disparities. We understand that this hasn't been done in quite some time and part of the reason is it's quite expensive. So we understand that this could be, you know, done every some other year, something that makes sense, but it should not, we should not collect this information and not analyze it. Next recommendation. This is the first slide under mental health ad hoc committee recommendations. The the main recommendation is that the Office of Community Response should provide quarterly updates to the commission by sharing among among many things, relevant call data, updates on the creation of the department and funding, updates on program creation and other relevant information related to full functionality of the office or department. As we all know, the Office of Community Response was created to take calls not appropriate for SACPD. It is important that the commission be able to understand how things are going and progressing and give advice through this transition. Next slide, continuing on, continuing on, under mental health. The city should provide resources so that its peace officers have access to ongoing mental health resources generally and after trauma traumatic incidences. We need a foster culture of emotional wellness within the Sacramento Police Department. In advancing the understanding that high levels of stress are part of the profession. So we recommend reoccurring mental health checks, again, not necessarily tied to incidences. The second, the city should rapidly increase its investment in the Department of Community Response. Going on to the next slide. We are now moving into the next ad hoc committee, which is internal ad hoc committee. It has, the first recommendation is that if the commission is to serve the role that the city and the community expects, the commission needs a budget that includes access to independent legal counsel where the commission's recommendations may differ from the direction of the city management. And police departments, additional staff support to supplement the assistance of OPSA. I'll just add a note very quickly there. Workload and 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 other limitations are regularly brought up during commission requests and that's why we're putting this forward. And then the second recommendation, amend the city code so that the quorum is the majority of members serving on the commission. This is an issue on the commission and it may be an issue in other commissions or boards. But when we have vacancies, sometimes it can become difficult to establish a quorum if the quorum is based on the on all of the positions in the commission. Second to last slide. Again, on internal ad hoc committee recommendations. SACPD must operate as a partner with a commission and OPSA. To this effect, SACPD should be required to do the following. Meet with a commission and OPSA staff during agenda setting meetings to directly address requests. Instead of having OPSA serve as an intermediary. Oftentimes when we meet to set the agenda, this leads to delays because we don't have a response and so it would be helpful that SACPD be present. Require the police chief or his representative, meet with the commission to provide feedback to the commission about its recommendations as part of the drafting process. This has been done sometimes, but we want to formalize it. Require SACPD have a police liaison present at all commission monthly meetings to respond to questions and information requests. This generally happens, but in the past, when that liaison may not be present, we have have heard that this is something that is as a courtesy. It's not required. So that's why that's important. Require that SACPD responding good faith to reasonable commission questions. More and more, we, the commission feels that it's not getting substantive and responses from SACPD to its questions. Lastly, require that SACPD give presentations to the commission on topics that fall within the scope of the commission. Similarly to the previous point. We were, we had, in the beginning, we were getting quite a few presentations when the commission requested. And as time has moved forward, we are, those requests have not gotten not resulted in presentations. So that is the end. That takes us to questions.
Mr. Mayor. Okay, um, I, Madam Clerk. How many members of the public do we have in the queue?
I have 11 callers.
Let's hear from the members of the public. And then we'll turn it over to council for discussion and again, direction based on the presentation that we have just heard.
Thank you. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Corinne McIntosh-Sacco. I'm a licensed clinical psychologist and a resident of District Seven. Community participation is not just checking out a box indicating you had a community listening session, but that you take that community feedback under advisement, actually take some action on it. The Sacramento Community Police Review Commission was established to provide community participation in reviewing and recommending police department policies, practices and procedures. And to monitor the implementation, evaluation and sustainability of city policing initiatives and programs. The recommendations of this commission are very important to me as it pertains to alternatives to law enforcement for mental health crisis and quality of life response. As well as adopting a higher use of force standard as last resort. I was very pleased to see that the police review commission uplifted the importance of ensuring that members of the public experiencing mental health crises are treated with dignity and compassion. And as such, they recommended that Sacramento urgently move away from law enforcement response to mental health crises. And to partner with trusted community organizations by funding community-based mental health response programs. I'm calling to express my strong support for city council to approve all the recommendations from the police review commission from the last three years and to not wait six months from now or a year from now, but to take action now as we've been needing this. I implore you to empower the commission with independent legal counsel and subpoena power to fully review SACPD's policy and practices. And to actively evaluate implementation of commission recommendations. Whether by new ordinance or charter change, please make it happen. I also urge you to give the commission the staffing and the budget it needs to fully engage the community in developing its recommendations, including community workshops, listening sessions and an easily accessible website to share its work. I also implore city council to invite the commission to regularly present updates on its work and recommendations directly to city council meetings and then vote on those recommendations every year.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm here to support more police transparency and accountability. I firmly support the city council directing the city manager to hold Sacramento Police Department accountable for working collaboratively to address the community's concerns. The city council needs to direct the city attorney to provide appropriately qualified independent legal counsel as the commission determines necessary. The police commission's annual recommendations deserve to be acted upon by the city council promptly. Given the sensitive nature of continued national and local police killings of unarmed African American men. All three years, commission recommendation must be immediately acted upon. The historical and current racial disparities in policing the Sacramento community represents an urgent need for action in the current political climate. There are lives at stake. The city must, cannot afford further delays in acting upon the police commission recommendation. I ask the city council to refer to the law and legislation committee actions to draft an audience amendment to establish the police review commission as an oversight body to the Sacramento Police Department with subpoena power. I call special attention to recommendations concerning the city's use of force policies.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
And comply with AB 3, AB 392 outlined by the League of Women Voters October 2020 policing report.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Am I audible?
Yes, you are. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and council members. My name is Roz Myers, District Eight resident, parent and grandparent. I'm appreciative of this opportunity to share my sentiments with you, but I oppose the POST language based on Graham versus Connor and strongly request that you don't kill me. Allow me to die in peace and not of a broken heart because my child was killed by over aggressive policing in our communities. My family is multicultural and biracial. I can't stop advocating and working toward the end of police killing of unarmed black men and women. I ask the city council to establish the police review commission as an oversight body to the Sacramento Police Department with subpoena power. In addition to the following three actionable items that can be initiated immediately if you have political will and want to be on the right side of history. Number one, the city council should direct the city manager to hold Sacramento Police Department accountable for working collaboratively to address the community's concerns with qualified independent legal counsel. Immediately act upon the police commission's annual recommendations. The urgency of now coupled with the historical and current racial disparities in policing the Sacramento community cries out for an urgent need for action in the current political climate. There are lives at stake. The city cannot afford further delays in acting upon the police commission's recommendations. Remember, the litigation and civil awards are expensive and they are financed through our budget. Number three, and final, the city's use of force policies and compliances with AB 392 as outlined in the League of Women Voters October 2020.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I ask that the city send AB 392 to the law and legislation committee to develop a proper resolution establishing AB 392 as the minimum standard.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and council members. My name is Patricia Sturdevent. I'm a resident of District Four. And I'm speaking on behalf of the National Council of Jewish Women Sacramento to urge you to adopt and implement the commission's first two recommendations and do it now. For the crucially important reason that the Sacramento Police Department's use of lethal force policy does not comply with California law. The law which Mr. Guerrero cited was effective January 1, 2020. And this is the third time that the commission has brought that fact and the need for change to your attention. Moreover, former Attorney General Becerra twice reported in written reports to you the need to bring the Sacramento Police Department's use of lethal force policy into compliance with that law. This issue is urgent and it needs your immediate attention. Further delay in inaction are simply indefensible. We also support the commission's recommendations regarding timely review and response of their recommendations by the police department and the city council. The commission was established after all to provide community participation and involvement in establishing and monitoring policing practices. And that purpose is ill-served without timely review and response to its well-founded recommendations. Thank you for considering these remarks.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. The the city council must direct the city manager to hold the Sacramento Police Department accountable for working collaboratively to address the community's concerns. Furthermore, the city council needs to direct the city attorney to provide appropriately qualified independent legal counsel as the commission determines necessary. The police commission's annuals, annual recommendations deserve to be acted upon by the city council promptly. Given the sensitive nature of continued national and local police killing of unarmed African American, African American men. Of all three years, commission's recommendations must be immediately acted upon. The historical and current racial disparities in policing the Sacramento community represent an urgent need for action in the current political climate. There are lives at stake. The city cannot afford further delays in acting upon in in acting upon the police commission's recommendations. I ask the city council to refer to the law and legislation committee action to draft an ordinance, an ordinance amendment to establish the police review commission as an oversight body to the Sacramento Police Department with subpoena power. I call special attention to recommendations concerning the city's use of force policies in compliance with AB 392 outlined in the League of Women Voters October 2020 policing report. I ask that the city send AB 392 to the law and legislation committee to develop proper resolution establishing AB 392 as the minimum standard for police use of force policy. Directing city appointed staff to to implement. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, I'm here to support the recommendations of the police review committee. Particularly the attention to mental health alternatives and the addressing of police use of force such as the carotid artery hold and foot pursuits as well as the body worn camera issue. I really appreciate the commission's work on all of these. I think that there are certain things which could go honestly further like requiring, for example, requiring an ethnic studies course. You know, I don't think that really goes far enough to undo the system of racist policing that we have in this country and in the state. I also just want to talk about specifically the accountability issue. There's absolutely no accountability in Sacramento PD right now. We've all seen this summer, police brutalizing people, covering their badges, not accidentally not having their camera on type of thing. And the one venue that we have is Police Review Commission. And clearly their recommendations have been sitting here since 2018, completely ignored. have been sitting here since two thousand eighteen, completely ignored. Um, so what was the point of making the commission if you all aren't even going to take it seriously? So I really want to support that recommendation to, uh, please review the commission's, um, recommendations every April and actually put them on the agenda for a vote. Don't just, you know, listen to them and let them go out the other ear. And also I support, um, the subpoena, the subpoena power for the commission as well. Um, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Reminder to callers to turn down the device on which they're watching the council meeting. Welcome to the meeting, caller. You have two minutes to address the council. Next caller, please. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yeah, hi, Misty Jones, D five, and I'm calling in support of the commission's review. And I'd like to point out that after Stephon Clark was murdered in March of twenty eighteen, the five oh eight thirteen foot pursuit policy was updated July twenty-sixth, and yet in September, on September sixth, twenty eighteen, Daryl Richards was still murdered, even though they had new foot pursuit policy in place. And as people have already mentioned, this commission's been in place for years. You guys have sat idle on it. Daryl Richards was murdered. Stephon Clark was murdered prior to that, just a month. Jeremy Southern was murdered last summer. SAC PD has not been held accountable. I would take it a step further, and I would say that you need to fire the city manager, Howard Chan, and you need to hold these people accountable. And as far as the bargaining issues, which on page forty-seven, is it forty-seven? What page is it? No, I'm sorry, page forty-six. They say they don't want to deal with their officers being drug tested when they, uh, have issues or blood. They're saying it's a bargaining issue and they just won't do it. That's what the SAC PD's response was. Well, as the commissioner, uh, board guy said, this is a bargaining issue that the hiring office, all they have to do is put it on the table and push for it. So if SAC PD wanted to do this, or the city wants to do this, then that's what you guys need to do. When are you going to hold SAC PD accountable? When are you going to defund them? And when are you going to move those resources to the community so that we do have mental health, uh, ad-hoc in place and all of these other things that the commission is looking for? You guys haven't been taking any of this seriously, and people have been murdered since. These updates have been put forward to you, and you've done nothing. So you need to give them some teeth. You need to do what these people are saying about this oversight commission, give them some subpoena power. You need to fire Chan. You need to actually do something. How, how many more people need to be murdered under your watch? How many more people are going to be murdered while you just sit there and have these grandstanding meetings, patting each other on the back, talking in circles like you're going to do something and nothing is happening?
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, do something, more than just talk about it.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, this is PJ. I'm a forty-year resident of Sacramento. I'm concerned the recommendations by this committee have been ignored by this council for the several, for several years now. You touted this committee as being part of your so-called reform of the police that you wanted, but you lied, Daryl. You lied to the people of Sacramento because you know you have been ignoring the commission's recommendations, because you purposely create these commissions to give the public the perception of progress when that's all you want, the perception. And that may be our fault for not keeping you accountable since you clearly have no qualms as a grown-ass man with going back on your word, with effectively violating public trust because you know you won't be held to account. Ethics and morals deal with doing the right thing even when no one is looking, even when you know you can get away with it. I suggest looking into getting some of those so that you have a moral or ethical dilemma when your brain tells you to lie, to pander to the public so you can get a gold star for the day knowing full well you'll go back on your word. Empower the commission with independent legal counsel and subpoena power to fully review SAC PD policy and practices and to actively evaluate implementation of commission recommendations. Do this by ordinance or charter change. We don't trust you to follow through otherwise. Fund the commission with staff and the resources necessary to complete its purported mission. And no cop policing other cops. Sorry, but that is a non-starter. The thin blue line is literally a thing that is known about where cops cover for other cops who break the law, and you really think an I G who is born of that system is going to be suddenly, suddenly not protect cops? Come the fuck on, Daryl, be real. Implement these recommendations by the Police Review Commission. Take the reform you tout seriously. Yeah, we know you won't get defunding out of a status quo neo lib like you, but at least this would make it appear that you're committed to starting to keep police accountable to the community and not complicit in their abuses. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and council members. This is Karen Savage-Senglin. I'm a member of the police commission, so wanted to call in today to, um, urge your support for the recommendations, some of which date back to twenty eighteen, when I actually came before you and presented those recommendations, or twenty nineteen, excuse me. Um, so they've been sitting for quite a while, and in particular with regard to the use of force recommendation, you know, this is one that has been sitting since the very beginning of the commission. And I know that there's been a lot of debate and back and forth about how far the city can go and how far the city wants to go. And I really want to encourage us to have the conversation, not about what we can't do, but about what are all of the different ways that we could approach this and what are all of the different ways that ultimately we can save lives, both civilians and officers, which has been my goal on the commission. And I know one that the city council shares. So as you proceed with your conversation and your discussion this afternoon, I really hope you will consider seriously some of these recommendations and implementing them and seeing if potentially they can be a path forward, um, for our city. And I also just want to thank you for the opportunity to serve on the commission. This is my last month on the commission. I've been around since twenty eighteen or twenty seventeen, but want to thank you for the opportunity and really hope that the city continues to make progress with the really transformational change that we need, um, in policing. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. My name is Richard Falcone. I am a proud member of the Sacramento Police Review Commission, appointed on District Seven under Rick Jennings. And I want to take this time to let you know that I do, of course, as a colleague on this commission, fully support the recommendations that have been imposed by my colleagues in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, and two thousand twenty. I am also the chair of the Ad hoc Committee for the Mental Health and the nine-one-one Alternative Response, and I urgently plead with you to please seriously take a look at the recommendations that we are providing forward. When I volunteered for this commission three years ago, I did so so that I could serve my community. Please help me to know that the work that I have been putting in and the work of my colleagues have not been in vain. To give you something anecdotally, at a commission meeting, two commission meetings ago, I asked openly, are we in compliance with A B three ninety-two? I was not able to get a clear answer. I ask you to please look forward to taking a look at those recommendations, to determining our compliance with A B three ninety-two, and to act accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers.
You're on mute, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I want to, um, thank the callers, uh, for taking the time to call in, and again to thank Chair Guerrero and all the members of your commission. Um, I want the council to take action today. I think that's the message. There are a lot of issues here, but I think the, the chairman has organized the presentation and the priorities in such a way that it's tangible, um, and, um, and it allows us to get a great start, and, uh, that's what I hope we can, uh, do today. Let me turn it over to Councilmember Katie Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do want to note, I was getting messages, I have folks' calls drop when they're in the queue, and then they can't get back in because we closed the queue, and just respect the fact that I know folks were trying to call in who, who didn't get a chance to comment today. But, um, I want to start with a few questions of my own from last night's commission meetings before I get into these recos, and, and I'm not going to put Deputy Chief Lester on the spot today, but I would like some sort of report back on some of these questions that appear to be frustrating, and I think part of the transparency concerns and why I think the commission is looking for resources is because they're looking for a clearer path to get questions answered. Um, so one such question, for example, is have there been any changes in policy as a result of lawsuits filed since twenty eighteen? And if so, how do we communicate changes of policy to the community at large? Another question is that, yeah, I've heard SAC PD in these meetings as well as offline talk about making plans for staffing and preparing for events that include protests, and I was hoping we could know if PD can talk about those plans and if those plans are available to the public. There's a general order five-three-two dot one-one that's still referenced in SAC PD's Crowd and Riot Control Manual, yet that order no longer exists, at least not on our website. And so I'd like to understand, um, why it went away, if it went away, um, and what plans are to replace that for that, um, guidance to our officers? And how exactly is Sacramento Police Department currently sharing information with the public regarding response to recent protests? And then what is the police department's policies regarding surveillance before, during, and after protests? And what technology do we use or have access to to do that surveillance? So I'm just reading that in, and I'll email that follow-up to, to Howard, um, to get follow-up regarding the commission discussion as recently as last night. It, it has been a few years since we established the commission, and I'm really excited that I know Jorge, our city auditor, is currently doing a review and looking at best practices for other commissions in other cities and how our commission's functioning. And I hope that tonight is really just the beginning of a longer conversation about how, as a lot of callers said, we ensure our commission is meeting the goals, which is to give the public confidence, to let them know that there's a place they can go to get questions answered, to make recommendations, that the council is going to take that role seriously and really consider that as a commission that we have appointed in our role as a city council. Um, I would also like to briefly respond to some correspondence we received prior to this meeting regarding, that referred to the commission's recommendations as quote, "overreaching power grab," um, end quote. Uh, this commission was appointed by us to make recommendations exactly like what we're looking at today. And while this may seem a fringe position to some, these recommendations are very consistent with what I've heard in the community, what we've seen in survey data from People's Budget, what we've heard on the streets as people have come out to protest after murder, after murder of black people in our community, in our state, in our country have occurred yet again. Um, this is consistent with what the community has demanded us to do to ensure there is clarity in our policy and that there is accountability when rules are broken. My dad used to always say that when you're a hammer, everything starts to look like a nail. So I really want to encourage folks who might be concerned with the changes that are presented to us today to really step back and reevaluate, reevaluate your own perspective on the challenges here, because we cannot, we cannot continue to keep triaging a broken system with law enforcement. We cannot keep doing this. And I know that the council agrees because that's why we stood up the Department of Community Response. That's why we're building the system so that it doesn't fall on law enforcement to respond to things. But this also goes back to a general premise that I don't believe people are safe when they're forced to call nine-one-one when a crisis occurs. You know, I think safety happens when you prevent the crisis and when you don't have to call nine-one-one, and it doesn't mean you don't have an appropriate emergency response if a crisis arises, but it means we're investing in the things that prevent that crisis from happening in the first place, which is all the things we talked about today on our last item and previous to this meeting. Sacramento really has a true opportunity to lead, um, just not, just when we redefine public safety to include more than just traditional public safety, but also on this item. So I really want to thank the commission because this is tireless work. You are unpaid. I, I fifty-five pages of recommendations is not a small fee even for a paid commission. And so I really want to actually make a motion today to adopt the recommendations that Mario has provided to us in his slides. Um, so specifically looking at the key non-bargaining recommendations from twenty nineteen, the bargaining recommendations from twenty nineteen, and the recommendations from twenty twenty as presented by Mario. That's not all of the recommendations. So what I'd like to further direct staff to do is do an analysis of the rest of the recommendations. I'd like to understand which have already been implemented, either in part or by full, by SAC PD, um, what legal barriers might exist for some of these recommendations, if we need to be considering charter changes, or if there's limitations to the councils of authority in any way on those items, and if there's any restrictions that would require bargaining. And so we could basically get back like a chart, um, of the rest of the recommendations outside of Mario's presentation that look at these key questions so we can start continuing to revisit them and updating them as we continue this important conversation. But I would move, Mr. Mayor, that we adopt the recommendations that Mario has presented to us here today, and welcome the comments and, um, from my colleagues.
Thank you. I, I know I'm prepared to support your motion, and I thank you for it. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, second, my councilmember Vang, let's go through the queue here. I've got Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I would like to say also thank you to the commission. I know that they have put a lot of work into their investigation and recommendations. Uh, I also feel that the council has not given them their due credence for the past three years, and I understand the umbrage that they take and their continuous fight to get the attention from council that they deserve. I think that some of these recommendations are excellent, and some of them are not legal to impose right now, and some of them are recommendations that I would oppose. It runs the whole gamut. Uh, so he, here's the thing. We never had an intelligent debate and discussion about these recommendations, and that is really on the council. And, you know, for my part, I accept my responsibility in that, in not trying to bring to our attention a more focused discussion about these recommendations, because some of them are very substantial. The problem is this, we need to have a full discussion before adoption of, of these recommendations. And so my direction to the city manager would be to bring us a presentation by OPSA and either Police Chief Hahn or Chief Lester, the city attorney, and a representative from SPOA to go through these recommendations, item by item, and provide their perspective on whether they are achievable or what they think the repercussions would be. This is the discussion that we have never had to this point. Um, and, you know, this is a receive and provide direction item. I'm not sure that we can actually entertain a motion to accept these recommendations at this point, but the point I'm trying to make is, we, just because we have done a poor job in the past does not mean that we adopt these recommendations this evening. We really need to bring a focused discussion to council, address all of these issues one by one, understand which are legal with state law, which are legal with H R restrictions, um, so that we know what we're voting on. And this is very problematic for me. I, I think that we need to have that discussion, and once again, I laud the efforts of, of the Police Review Commission, but it would be entirely premature to accept these recommendations without a full debate at council and all of the parties represented who these recommendations will affect. It, it just, it makes no sense to me. It's one of those political maneuverings that I really dislike sometimes about our council. And, um, you know, I, I, I offer that as a criticism of our council, that we do not debate fully in public these really critical issues, but rather sometimes either obfuscate or take action on things when we haven't been as transparent with our constituents as we should be. Some of our constituents are our police officers. Some of our constituents work in mental health. You know, ju- just to give you an example, of course, I would love to, to fund the Department of Community Response to a much higher extent and take away a lot of the issues of mental response from, from P D, and we are moving in that direction. We already set a lot of, uh, balls in motion to move in the right direction, but once again, and I'm not going to belabor the point after this, we have not had the proper discussion about these recommendations, and we need to. But to take action tonight is completely premature, and I want to ask the city attorney if we could actually entertain a motion to pass these recommendations this evening. City attorney?
Councilmember, I believe this is on for review and, or review and direction, to provide direction, so, um, I don't know much more about what, um, this item was about other than that. So certainly the council could provide direction, um, along the line of what, uh, what you are saying or what, uh, the mayor is saying.
Well, are you saying, Susanna, that we can adopt these recommendations via a motion?
I don't, I, it's not on for, uh, for a motion. It's on for receive and provide direction. So that is not an action. So that is not an action item.
Well, thank you for clarifying. My direction to the city manager is exactly this. Bring back very quickly a focused discussion. And certainly Mario can be there, but Chief Hahn, Letitia Watson. Susanna and somebody from SPOA so that we can go through these very substantial recommendations. Again, some are excellent, some I don't think are implementable. And we can go through those item by item and make a really intelligent decision by this council. Up and until that point, I could never support a motion to adopt these. But that being said. We need to give this commission the due credence and and honor the work that they have brought forward because they've done it in earnest and they've done it honestly. And frankly, you know, they they really haven't been given the attention they deserve in my opinion. So let's do that. Let's have a focused debate about these issues. You know, I'm not going to go item by item through each issue. Some I have deep concern about and some I would vote yes for immediately. But as a package to accept them tonight, absolutely not. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, I I'm not exactly sure, and I'm going to turn to my colleagues, which specific items are controversial. For example, the use of force issue. This has been debated for two to three years in the city council and here's the problem. You're exactly right, Councilmember Harris. We have not given the commission its due and here's why. Let's be honest about it. There's a huge resistance to anybody from the outside telling the city, the police department, what to do and how to do their business. And we have a great police chief, but I'm sorry, that is the whole point of a police review commission. They don't have subpoena authority. They aren't investigating individual cases. They aren't in the day-to-day business of the police department. But they have been making these kinds of recommendations for several years here and frankly, we have ping ponged the city, all of us. The council, myself, the city management, we ping ponged these things back and forth. And you wonder why they're frustrated? Because we never say that a use of force policy should include last resort, for example. As a a proper way to, as a proper policy for the use of deadly force. There's nothing new here. I mean, these these controversial recommendations, like the commission should have the ability to merely. Review a change in the general order before it's adopted or that the police department should be consistently responsive to their. To to the request for information. I don't know what 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 I'm missing here, but this is.
Well, how about this, Mayor? How how about their call for an independent council?
They're not calling for, read the recommendation. They're not calling for an independent council. Their recommendation is to be able to have a budget and potential access to outside council. To be able to get an opinion. That's different from hiring an attorney. That's not what they're asking for. And of course, we would have the ability, this is just a generic recommendation, to be able to say no. We're not going to provide that much money or we're not going to provide exactly what you're asking, but to tailor it. And work with them in the way that I worked with Chair Guerrero on this presentation. I would tell you what the alternative is, members. The alternative is to take the fifty-five page set of recommendations. That 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 are sitting in your binder here and go through every darn one of them and yes, provide input. And then have the city manager come back and try to try to gauge how nine different members express themselves on fifty-five pages of recommendations. And and then to come back and cast some sort of vote, by the way, not weeks from now, but many months from now. While Minneapolis is occurring, by the way. While while our city and the entire country is on edge here. These aren't that controversial. They're progressive, they're forward thinking, but they're. These are issues that we have been discussing as a city and as a city council for several years now and to not take action tonight. I'm sorry, at least provide direction. I understand what the city attorney said and maybe Councilmember Valenzuela. You may need to amend a little bit in terms of providing direction and then maybe it does have to come back in in a more formal way. But I I guess the direction would be to have the city manager come back with these exact items. So that we can vote on them within the next couple of weeks because. That should not take that long simply to memorialize what it is that's contained in Chair Guerrero's PowerPoint.
Well, Mayor, I agree with you and I disagree with you. Some of these recommendations are are extremely appropriate. And yes, we've talked about them for three years, some not so much. But why would it be a problem for you to get the perspective of PD, OPSA, and the city attorney? So that we have a really informed discussion about this. You know, I I'm not content to do a a political reaction to the incidents of the day. Incidentally, which have not occurred in our city and take action on something that requires further reflection. Again, Mario, I got to tell you straight up, I appreciate you and I appreciate all this work. I appreciate your frustration. But that's our bad, not your bad. But now it's time to really get down, dig in and understand the meat of this. And understand if we're in compliance with AB three nine two and go through all of that. You know, Jay and I met with the League of Women Voters and spoke for a couple of hours on this subject. You know, th- these are deep issues and and we should not take action tonight. Bring it back, yes, but bring it back with all the perspectives. And in fact, the police review commission. One of their asks is that PD goes to their meetings and gives them reaction. So that we don't go through this angst. We need to create a better system with our commission. There's absolutely no doubt. We need to give them their due credence and bring them into the fold of the discussion, but it's still a discussion that needs to be had.
Okay, let let us move on. Let's hear from other members. I've got Councilmember Geta.
You're muted, Councilmember.
You're muted.
Test one, two. Can you can you guys see that and hear that now? It's weird, okay. I agree with with a council member. I mean, I disagree with Councilmembers Harris's point here, sorry, on on the question of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. I mean, we sat through a very long presentation on the matrix for twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen with. All of those recommendations with the police department's response, the planning commission's response. What other agencies had done, a comparison about what other think tanks had proposed as well. And and I and I thought Chair Guerrero put together that last presentation last year very well. So I I think to the point of of twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, there there has been a lot of public review in that in that. The the twenty twenty, I we we didn't do that level of of review as we did the twenty eighteen and nineteen. The 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 recommendations that are that you guys, that the that Mario's proposed here, that the Chair, Chair Guerrero's proposed. I think are things that you have to process wise because, you know, some of this is is the bargaining issue. You know, is is it's how it's more of an implementation question. And I understand what the city attorney is saying here. So I I think maybe, and and maybe this is a question for my colleague. Who maker of the motion, Councilmember Valenzuela, about making the motion so that it provides direction. Whether something has to go to law and ledge or if it's coming back for budget or or whatever process it is. Since since we do have a Brown Act question here about how it was agendized for today's meeting. But I think by by taking an action motion, what we're saying is we're giving direction to the city manager. On how to bring this back so that there is a vote. And anytime something comes back for a vote, it gets reviewed, it gets reviewed by the city attorney's office, it gets reviewed by our policy staff. And then it's up to the council whether to to make an up or down vote at that point. But I I will say though that the twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen recommendations have had a lot of public review from our council here. So let me start, stop there and ask a question to Councilmember Valenzuela if that's kind of the direction about implementation. Because I I believe that legal women voters were were correct in their in their point of saying, you know. Make maybe having this go to law and legislation.
So I, well, first I have just a question on if I need to be providing direction instead of moving adoption. Because I would like to move adoption. And I'm not sure how to answer that question in this moment. I think when it comes to, I don't think. You know, the whole point of having the commission with publicly agendized meetings with PD present, with, you know, different staff present is so that these can be discussed. At a community level. So I don't know if I agree that going to law and ledge first is necessary necessarily, especially for the use of force. Recommendations, because that's stuff that really should have been done by now. You know, we we need to move on that quickly and and I think. I mean, just to resummarize what this is saying, right? It's basically saying, we are not going to use force unless it's a last resort, unless we reasonably. Believe that force is necessary. It's an immediate threat. I mean, this is a policy that I don't think any of us would disagree with.
Okay.
And it's based off of what's happening in other areas. So I guess, yeah, sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Katie, I don't mean to interrupt, but I just, I want to cut through the processing. If the city attorney is telling us. That it is not appropriate for a motion, I would ask you if you would to amend your direction. To ask that what we, that that the recommendations in the presentation come back for a vote within a week or two here to the city council. Okay, I think that's the, in that way, we're not kicking the can down the road. But we are obviously complying with the the law and the process in terms of what is a a motion versus a direction.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So yes, then I would like to provide direction and looking at our calendar and given the fact that we wouldn't have a meeting on the twenty seventh. I'd like to agendize this as an action item on the twentieth. It could be the exact same materials. And I just want to talk again about the process point briefly. I mean, we all have appointees to the commission and I talk to my commissioner all the time. And and I hope you all do too, because I'm curious about what's happening and and I mean, that's why he's there, right? Is to help me understand what's going on and to represent District Four on this commission. And so I've known this has been coming for weeks. And not only did I know it was coming for weeks, I also knew it was coming for longer than that because there have been documents produced, there's been presentations to council. There's been conversations, agendas at the commission meeting. And so I've had members of the public saying, okay, what's happening with this? Are you going to do this? And I just think that there's a comment that was made about responding to, quote, the incidents of the day. And I just, I need to say something about that because I don't believe it was your intention to to make it sound. As if this wasn't a systemic problem, as if this hadn't happened in Sacramento multiple times, as if this wasn't an ardent fear. And and cry for help that I have heard from my community for years in Sacramento. I know that we didn't mean to trivialize the importance of the recommendations and the importance of us acting as quickly as possible. To provide as clear a direction as possible to people in our community who are carrying guns that can kill people. Like, we need to be super, super clear. It's what enables us to take action when needed. It's what enables us to be a whole, the accountability line. And and I just, I need to say that, or else I feel like my my heart is going to explode from the pain of what we're hearing and experiencing in our community. Not just in the, not just across the country, but the reason that protests happen here is not just because of what's happening there, right? It's it's worried because this is a fear that our community lives with every single day right now. And if we can do anything to alleviate the fear that just because you got pulled over, because you had an issue with your taillight. Or you didn't use a turn signal or you were in the wrong neighborhood and didn't hear a command and didn't respond appropriately, that you were going to die. At the hands of people who are employed by our city, then gosh darn it, I want to do that right now. But if what I'm hearing is that I can't. Then my direction, I will withdraw my motion and provide direction for this to come back as an action item. The full recommendations is presented by Mario on the twentieth.
Not the twentieth, I think the twenty seventh, please, is is the date that works better.
Is that a special meeting, Mayor? Are we allowed able?
I don't know. Why don't we say within the next two to three weeks, then we have a little flexibility here, okay? I just think we have to work the calendar.
Mr. Mayor, can can I ask Katie if she can amend her direction just slightly? I'm happy to bring this back as an action item and bring it back soon, but Katie, it might ask to you. Part of your direction be that we have a response from the city attorney from PD.
Sure.
SPOA as part of the staff report. So that all the information is presented in one package. And I don't care if it's a twelve hundred page book. But I want to be able to make an intelligent decision about accepting these recommendations, which are legal, which are prevented by. Police Officer Bill of Rights. I just want that discussion to be had. Some of it could be copy and paste for twenty eighteen and nineteen. But I'm asking you if you will accept that amendment to your direction.
I welcome that amendment. In fact, I really hope that the SPOA letter that we all received that called this a quote overarching power grab. Along with a bunch of other things that were incredibly disrespectful to the work of this commission is included in that packet as well. I'd welcome that.
Thank you, Katie. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, Councilmember Valenzuela, thank you very much. And and with that, I mean, I I'll I'll second that that direction unless. Councilmember Vang wanted to second that direction.
It's it's, we're not taking a motion, so just weigh in on the direction and then.
Yeah, so I I'll support the, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank, I'll, I will, again, I think it's good. I think the only other thing that would add is. Is the the reason we have this issue is because we also haven't created, given the process for the for the the police commission. To bring things forward on a regular basis. And so what I'd like to ask is that. The is that we work with the the planning commission, that our city staff work with the planning, with the police commission on a better process. So that as we come to April, say, if this does get approved by the council. That the that we also have a a a better way for executing the type of of policies we want to make. Some of them may be budgetary, so they they don't, it wouldn't be, they would be only in the budget community. Some of them may be ordinance changes. Those go to law and legislation. So I think we need to need to make a clearer process so the commissioners and the public know how to actually effectuate change. And move from pub, uh, citizens' commission to actually something tangible at the council level. So that's my only last piece of direction is developing a better process that's clear for folks to participate in.
Well, and if I could just make an amendment, Councilmember Garrett, that's okay. I think like, there's a process that happens and then there's exceptions to that process, right? Like, not every ordinance goes through law and ledge. And so I think what would be great is for us to have the range of of what options exist under our city charter. So that we can make a decision as to what process makes the most sense for the police commission, given their expertise and 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 the goals of that group.
Yep, I I am always good with options, but I think as long as you have something consistent and people understand, you know, how how to best move forward. But yes, always having flexibility is good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, who do we have next? I got Mayor Protem Ashby.
Thanks, Mayor. So some of my concerns are addressed in that we are not going to take the vote tonight and it's going to come back. And I would just point out a couple of things here. While this has all been discussed a lot and it clearly has. There are a couple of unorthodox things about this process. One is normally when we hear from a committee or a commission, take for example Parks and Recreation Commission. Or the Planning Commission, which are two of the bigger ones, we hear from city staff. And in that, we get a city staff report and that goes through a process that is vetted by our city attorney. And therefore, there's some level of comfort that the city attorney has looked at the legal ramifications of whatever decision we're making. For me, neutral to the subject matter, I rely on that process to know that things have gone through the city attorney's office. That things have gone through the city manager's office and that any concerns they have with whatever we're adopting are highlighted. Now, sometimes we ignore their counsel and we do what we want to do anyway. But I would like to know before voting on any issue, Planning Commission, Parks Commission, Police Oversight Commission, what those ramifications are. Prior to make placing my my vote. So before this item comes back, whenever it comes back, I don't care if it's next week, the week after, the week after that. I would like to know that it has gone through that process so that I can fully understand because the mayor and our city attorney do not agree. On their interpretation of the requests being made by the Police Oversight Commission as it relates to outside council. I'm not interested in this moment in hearing which one of them is, hearing them argue to correctness. What I'm interested in is an analysis and a review and maybe somebody can circle up with the committee commission to talk a little bit about exactly what that ask is. Because they don't agree and the commission's attorney assigned by the city attorney's office also does not agree with what has been stated here. Based on her conversations with the committee and commission. So I just want some clarity on exactly what the outcome will be when we vote something up or down. I think we're very close. I think this is just fine work. And then the other piece of of this for me is. I agree that, you know, that it has been talked about a lot. I, I agree that the committee or the commission, I actually wrote the committee, the commission into existence, and then I wrote the secondary version as well. And I have said at every corner that I, we've written and rewritten that policy, that it, it is fluid. It needs to be discussed always what this committee and commission will do and become, and what its, what its role is. But it is unorthodox for the commission chair to present directly to the council. It skips steps of staffing. So if we're going to do that, it's fine, but then we need some type of report from city staff, because ultimately, in litigation, that's what we're accountable to. And I, SPOA, which is the recommendation that Councilmember Harris has asked Councilmember Valenzuela to include, is fine, but I am very interested in the city attorney's analysis more so than I am, you know, other outside groups. I want to know internally what are the ramifications to the decisions that would be made, so that we can make them knowing exactly, uh, what we're doing. So I appreciate Councilmember Valenzuela's patience to allow this item to come back in a couple of weeks and to allow us to get, to have the information and opportunity to speak with the city attorney at that time, so that she can help with the presentation and the city manager can review as well through that process that we send these recommendations through, so that we have the background knowledge to know exactly what we are voting up or down. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilmember Laloie.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mario, thank you very much for this report. I, I, I do agree that if it's going to come back to the council, there has to be some clarity with, um, the 2018, 2019 points that were made, um, such as, um, drug testing. What kind of drugs are we talking about? If you're smoking marijuana, it stays in your body for four months. It's legal. We're actually promoting it all over our city today. So is that considered a, a drug to be considered? So a little bit more detail on that would be, um, excellent. Uh, the ethnic classes, uh, what do we have in mind? Is it a 30-minute class? Who's, who's conducting it? What do we cover? You know, it's so, uh, general and, um, the, the first, the first two slides, I, I think i- is it the police policy today that you just shoot and then figure out where, whether it was reasonable, necessary, or immediate response? Because I think we're playing with words here and trying to make ourselves feel better by picking a word over the next one. You're recommending, uh, an immediate, uh, uh, response. You know, the, the, the law AB 392 says necessary. So again, when you're out on the field, are you, is your brain functioning like that? That's why a little bit of a response from the other side, or actually a little bit more detail on how we can decide on that, that would be, uh, wonderful. Giving access to records. What records are we discussing? Are we talking the, the personal records of the police officer? Are we talking about just the records of the incident? So again, a, a little bit breakdown on that, um, it would be great too, so it makes our decision-making a little bit easier. Yeah, and I mean, those are the things. So, um, I, I don't, if we can clarify, you know, drug testing, what do we call it? Is, you know, those, if you can break those down, whether it's at, at, at the commission level or at the, the city level, um, that would be great. I actually, i- it was a great report. It, it, you spent a lot of time on that report and I really, really appreciate it. And I actually read every single page. There are some great recommendations in that, that you'll have my support 200%. And there are some recommendations in that that are just not realistic. And those are the ones that come up for questions. Um, so, you know, to simply say, let's vote on this right now. It's not realistic. Um, we all, we do live in a real world. Um, on books and reports, black and white, it's easy. We can write it, we can read it, we can memorize it. But the real world is very different. And, and, and we got to take some of these things to consideration when we want to make decisions. So, um, I have to agree with my colleague, uh, Councilmember Harris, that it's hard to vote on this today or in three weeks unless we have, we have these broken down more uh, to what the reality of, of it is. And to just sit back and say the entire department has a systemic issue, um, from day one, I do have a problem with that statement. Because that means every organized, uh, facility has a systemic issue. That means you take it from the church all the way down to our own, uh, city and even to, uh, the diocese that we represent. So, um, you know, tho- those words are heavy and, um, it, it should not be directed towards the entire force if you have one or two individuals that are considered bad apples. And, um, that's my say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll try to keep this short. I think a few of my colleagues, uh, did mention some of the comments that I, I wanted to, to share. First, I just, um, one, want to thank, um, all of the members of the police commission for your tireless work uh, to get to this point today. And I want to thank Chair Guerrero, I just for presenting, uh, these recommendations that were shared via your PowerPoint. Um, I know you've poured lots of hours, um, uh, into this, and so really appreciate your work. And also want to give a shout out to District Eight Police Commissioner Renee Carter too, as well. Um, as I'm in close communication with her, and I know that she has poured a lot of heart and hustle um, into this recommendation and has a lot of institutional knowledge on the commission. Um, I did just have some questions. I will say that I do support, um, Council, Councilmember Valenzuela's direction. Um, and I support the analysis for our vote. I think it's important that we, uh, come back and do a, do a vote on this, so I, I support that. Um, I will say this is probably more progress than we've seen in three years, so this is a good thing. I try to have a growth mindset on that. Um, so that's great. But I did have some questions for Mario and also, uh, PD. Um, one of the first question I wanted to ask, because I think as I'm sitting here listening to my colleagues go back and forth about, um, you know, who has provided input, or we want to hear from OPSA and legal, um, I want to ask the question, uh, these recommendations that you presented today, Mario, and specifically the ones that you presented via slide, um, have you received SACPD's, um, input on these recommendations?
Short answer is yes. And, um, before I answer that question, I just want to just put in a little plug, um, very, as respectfully as I can, given the level of frustration, not only that I have, but the callers. Every council member has an appointee. And I am really truly, I'm begging you to invite me and your council, and your appointee. I am happy to walk through every single recommendation, walk through every different scenario. I can tell you that that has been a source of frustration and, um, we want to provide you information. So please, please, please do that. Um, because, you know, going on three years with three years of recommendations, uh, I have to say it, it's a shame. Um, now, to your question, Councilmember Vang, thank you. Yes, the, uh, police, uh, SACPD has had input throughout the process. First and foremost, they have been at most of our meetings. I want to make sure that, uh, uh, Councilmember Harris understands that some of the requirements of having, uh, SACPD do certain things, it's not that they haven't done them, it's that at times their, their response over time, had, they respond well, sometimes they don't respond, respond other times, sometimes they're missing. When we asked why weren't you at a meeting, uh, very specific meeting, they said, well, this is a, you know, this is, is not a requirement, we're there as a courtesy. And so we have to standardize participation. And it's sad, it really should be a partnership. It should be kind of an automatic, because every time they give us feedback, we tweak our recommendations. But very specifically, I want to talk about the 2018, 2019 recommendations. That has been brought to this body. Now, this is maybe either the third or fourth time. Uh, the time previous, I covered it with excruciating detail. Um, and many of you know this. And SACPD came back at another meeting and gave their feedback. And mind you, even when we were putting them together, we were, we presented these and got their feedback, agree, you know, agreed to disagree in some places and other places made, um, tweaks. And that's why in my presentation for the 2018, 2019, I stated that, um, you know, that, 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 this, these are ready to go, because we have talked about them to death. And there's just disagreement. Um, so even in the 2020 recommendations, we sat with, uh, a representative from SACPD, Deputy Chief Lester, walked through them. She gave me some good feedback. Um, and some of those things, some of those things are not presented here because they, they get good feedback. We, SACPD is doing a lot of good things. And maybe the thing they have to do is just, uh, provide clarity for the community by posting on the website. That is a chunk of recommendations that I didn't bring before you today, because that can be a simple remedy. So yes, SACPD has been part of this process, sometimes more, uh, an active partner and sometimes not as an active partner. So thank you for that question.
Yeah.
I, oh.
Go ahead, Mayor.
The other question I had, you know, when I was reading the recommendation, is that some of these recommendations are also very broad. Um, and I'm, I'm wondering, Mario, maybe if you can speak on to that, I, I'm thinking, you know, in terms of just implementation at staff level, maybe y'all kept it kind of broad, so that there's that flexibility. But if you can speak on that too, because some of these recommendations are actually pretty broad. Um, and, right? And so if you, if you can speak on that as well, that'd be great. And then I did have one more comment, so.
Absolutely. Some recommendation, th- these recommendations are purposely broader, specific. The, um, heightened standard for use of force, there is very little leeway on that. I mean, you either adopt the higher standard or you don't, and uh, uh, the last resort language. And that is exactly why that's specific. Um, now, for things like a, uh, an ethnic studies, um, course, you can take a one-unit course, you could take a two-unit course, you could take a three-unit course. There's different things. If you implemented by allowing, um, cadets to, um, you know, uh, only cadets, in other words, people coming into the program um, to, to, to require them to take it, then that's zero cost. If you require, um, current officers to do a review of who has a four-year degree, who took the class, if you didn't take the class, uh, you know, maybe the city pays for them to take it, that is expensive. So there are reasons why each one of these is the way it is. And I, I just, again, just highly recommend, I'm happy to sit, I or your appointee should be able to sit down with you and walk through each one of these. I, I make that commitment.
Thanks, Mario. One last comment. Um, you know, in my conversation, just on the ground and with commissioners and even with OPSA, there seems to be a, a disconnect, also a, a disconnect and miscommunication, or as Mario shared, uh, not, there's not something that's standardized in terms of communication between SACPD and the police department. I think we have to make sure we strengthen that, because as, as I'm reading one of the slides, right? SACPD must operate as a partner with the commission and OPSA. To this effect, SACPD should be required to meet with the commission and OPSA staff during, um, agenda setting. I'm like, isn't that something they should be doing already, right? Um, and so there are some of these, these items that I feel like are pretty basic, where we could just get moving on some of these already, because they're very process oriented. Um, and so I definitely do want to make sure and, and see, my co- Coffee agrees with me, because she's barking right now. She agrees. She agrees with the police recommend, the police commission recommendation. Um, I do think that there needs, there's like, seems to be a breakdown of miscommunication and standardizing, standardization. I want to make sure that we make sure of that. Um, the last piece I, I want to share is that, uh, my understanding, Coffee, hold on. My understanding is that OPSA is independent from SACPD as well. And, um, how I've been understanding the police commission is that, um, OPSA is like the middle person. And they're supposed to be independent from SACPD, and I don't want the commission members or the, or the community, uh, to see OPSA as part of SACPD. And I actually think, um, we need to figure out how to separate those, because technically, they're supposed to be independent. They're not just, you know, independent of SACPD, but also FIRE and all of that. Um, and so we may need to, um, and Howard, this, this may be a direction to you, or as council, we need to talk about this, but figuring out how we can really keep that independence as well. Those are my comments. Um, and I, uh, support Councilwoman Valenzuela's, uh, direction on this and hope that we can count on these, um, vote on these recommendations that are, that's very much overdue. And Mario, thank you for the clarification. Um, just the hours of work that y'all have poured in. Um, and, um, yeah, it's three years of recommendation, so let's make this happen. I think we owe it to our commission and to the public and to our communities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. A couple of just context comments, and I think we'll, we'll have it here. So this is an important discussion, and yes, there's a little creative tension here, because in some ways, we are breaking through all that the commission is asking for, and I think all that Councilmember Valenzuela and I and some others are asking for, is that we actually have a vote on some of their leading recommendations that have been sitting out there, and, and Chair Guerrero is correct, has been before the council in one form or another, two or three times over the last couple of years. That's it. And if, uh, a- and we listen to the city attorney, we've got a great city attorney and a great city attorney team. A- and so we, the city attorney, of course, should weigh in on whether or not anything we vote on, uh, is constitutional, how it affects the city. And in the end, the policymakers can make a decision about whether or not, uh, about what we want to do. And that's all we're asking for here. What I am most concerned about is that, um, the most important recommendation of all of them, maybe in addition to the use of force recommendation, is the recommendation set that says there needs to be a regularized process for the city council to vote on the commission's recommendations. And there needs to be more protocol, frankly, and better communication between the commission and the police department. Because I know this, we will regret it if, um, we do not have a good, solid, functional, even, even creatively tense relationship with the police commission, because that's okay. If, if we don't have these protocols, and we've been talking about this for several years, but in part because there's substantive disagreement, and in part because, well, in part because there's substantive disagreement, we haven't established those process protocols. And the point of today is to say, yes, we want to vote on their 2018, 19 recommendations. And we want to hear all the input. And we want to vote on the less, maybe the less controversial 2020, uh, recommendations. If folks are upset about this presentation, I would just ask you to consider the fact that what Chair Guerrero brought forward today is significantly smaller than the 55 pages or so of detailed recommendations in, uh, in, in your packet here. So we're trying to land a product here and make some progress here, and make some progress. And if we don't vote and vote affirmatively on, on at least some of these major recommendations, then we're going to continue to have elevated, uh, tension, not only with the commission, but in the community. And we need to be responsive to some of these issues. And so let's bring this back. Whatever it is, we're going to work the calendar here, whether it's the 20th, the 27th, or May the 4th, but in a very short period of time. And let's get the input of the city attorney. Let's get the input of, uh, all of the stakeholders, obviously including the police department. But let's take these recommendations as framed by Chair Guerrero. And let's work our process, motion, amendments, if members choose, or not substitutes, that's the way it works. And then let's make some decisions here that move us forward.
Mayor, could I just say one thing? I think Councilmember Valenzuela wants to say something too, but I'd like to give her the last word. I would just like to say, at least for myself, if not for the whole council, that I believe in this process that we have put in, in here today. And this is not a statement about anybody. Everybody's doing the right thing, moving the conversation forward and all of that. But I believe in this process, we have unintentionally offended not only our city attorney, but our city attorney's department. And I just want to say it for my own part, Mayor, on my own part. I, I don't want that to happen. We have an incredible city attorney, as you have already stated. She's wonderful. I, I've, we've had many city attorneys in the time that I have been here. We are so fortunate to have her and her team and her leadership in Sacramento. And if for some reason this process has offended her or her team, at least on my own part, on behalf of District One, I apologize. And I would like us very much to make that right between now and the time that we take the vote when this comes back, because she is an important and integral part of this team.
I agree with everything you just said. That is not the intent, not my intent. And if anything in here offends, uh, Suzanne Alcala, who is our, our great city attorney. And if anything in here offends Susanna Alcala, who is our, our great city attorney, we, we have been blessed and continue to be blessed with her leadership and her acumen and her entire office. Think about what we did with Aggie Square over the last couple of weeks, I think about so many examples. That isn't the point. All the commission was saying, and we can debate this in a couple of weeks, is that if there is a disagreement, that they would like at least the access to be able to get an outside opinion, that happens all the time in the law. And so no offense meant, certainly. And if any offense is taken, then yes, I'm very sorry, because that's the last thing that I wanna do. We're trying to struggle with major societal issues here. And we're trying to do it in the right way. We're trying to make progressive public safety reform that, that holds everybody together. That's what we're trying to do here. It's not easy. So let's move forward in a couple of weeks. Councilmember Valenzuela, last, last comment.
I appreciate that, Mayor. And I just wanted to put into context too, and, and of course, no, and not sure what's, if Susanna is offended by anything, definitely not the intent. I think that we've had commission, we've had reports come forward to this committee that are to the council, since I've been on it, that I've had like zero staff items, right, where it's like a two-page, there's gonna be an update. And I'm like, oh, okay. And then we hear and we do what we need to do. We also have a planning commission, who has the authority to make decisions on planning projects in some cases that I can't even bring up for council vote. I mean, we've given the planning commission an extreme amount of power. And I'm saying this to just note that, I think in the spectrum of practice, what has happened today in my mind is exceeded my expectations for what the commission could have done to bring this forward. And, and I just wanna make sure we keep this in context, right? You know, we can't suddenly make a decision about the built environment of building that will be here forever, that I don't get to have it voice on as a council member, but like, you know, this is, this is the way this is supposed to go in my mind. And I appreciate what Mario has done here tonight and I'm looking forward to voting on this soon. And I also just wanna say, when I went around, I did like spot canvas surveying, right? Like I just popped up in a neighborhood and was like, hey, what's your priority? And I remember knocking on my first door in Land Park, right along the park, big beautiful house. I was like, okay, what's your priority? You wanna know what this guy said to me? He said, Stefan Clark. He said, I can't believe this happened in our community. What has Sacramento done to make sure this won't happen again? I don't want a lot of people in our community to be scared. And he went on this long diatribe about his passion and his concern that Sacramento hadn't done enough. And at that door on that day, as I have done many times since then, I promised him I was gonna do everything I could, not just to strengthen the standards, but to reduce the likelihood that that happens in the first place by not using law enforcement as a tool to come into communities when communities really need investment and they really need problem solving and they need resources that are gonna prevent the need for that 911 call in the first place. So I just wanna put all of that in context to say that this is definitely not the end. And, and I look forward to the continued conversation. And this is what you can expect, at least from me, is that this is a very high priority. It's literally the first thing listed on my brochure material was police accountability, was transparency, because I believe that strongly, that this is something that we need to prioritize and we should be doing better as a city. And I'm looking forward to hearing from you all in a couple of weeks when we get to vote on it at that time.
Very good, thank you. So that'll sum up this light and uneventful hearing. Yes.
Just, just following what my colleague just stated, I think it's also very important that we do take a few steps back and think about how we can invest in these communities that have been for years and years underserved to minimize some of these situations. We can, and again, Mario, thank you so much for this report. It's a great report. It's a phenomenal report, lot of content. But no matter how many times we sit and we discuss the wording of necessary to immediate, that's just the word. If that's gonna make us feel good and the community good, then I, I, I'm sorry. We, we're just lying to ourselves. We also have to sit down and figure out how we can invest, take money and invest in communities to provide opportunities to minimize exactly what my colleague says, that 911 call. So that's another thing, as a council, I think it's our responsibility to look into. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna give you the last word, Chair Guerrero, since you started the presentation. You're ready.
Thank you. I just wanted to, first, I, I neglected to, in my comments, thank the commission. It really is just a labor of love for all, for all of us. I know many of us, there's a very minor stipend, many of us have rejected it. Some of us have even talked about, can we divert that stipend to a budget in the past? That's how, that's our focus, we are, of trying to make the commission work. So thank you to the commission, commissioners, both past and present on the amount of work. I do want to thank the council, the whole council, for all of the work and attention that you give to this. I am hopeful that, that we will, you know, get to some meaningful reform that makes the city and the community proud. And just, I wanna thank the mayor, because I, I was a former appointee by Steve Hansen and, and happy to have been his appointee. Now with the mayor, I appreciate the partnership and the ability to get this much closer to a final movement. I appreciate your partnership, your appointment, and your willingness to even struggle with me, because I know I'm not easy to work with. I keep pushing you and, and, and the council and you take it in stride and I, I appreciate that type of leadership. So thank you very much. So with that, thank you all for allowing me to present.
Okay, thank you. There will be no vote, but that's, I think, direction. We will come back within a couple of weeks and with some more input and take all, and take this item up for a vote. Okay. We have two callers for council ideas, for, for items not on the agenda, then I have one idea and question.
Thank you. Mui, of our first caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yeah, this is a shock for me. This is Lambert Davis of To The Bang Back Cheesecakes. I'm usually the last one selected, but I'm always ready. I don't care if it's first or last. First of all, I want to thank City Councilwoman Valenzuela and my bank. They are touching on some topics that I believe in. You know, if you don't have a performance data and this sort of thing, then that, that behavior that's going on against my company will be, will be continued. Now, I wanna emphasize that in this Sunday's paper, I thank the Sacramento Bee, if they're listening, because they put out an article, and I would suggest the mayor and the city council and the city manager's offices, some of them staff members, look at Sunday, April 11th, the article Sacramento's Pandemic Small Business Loans Struggle to Reach Underserved Neighborhoods. That confirms what I'm talking about. If you need to see it, get your staff on it. I do wanna say to City Councilman Luloli, I wanna thank you, because somebody reached out to me from your staff, and of course, it was millennials, shout out to the millennials. This is their time. I'm a baby boomer, so I know when I recognize people that are sincere. And I look forward to meeting with you. That's one of the wisest decisions you gonna ever meet, because everybody has an agenda, including me, but mine is not hidden. See, when you have a hidden agenda, that's deception. It's gonna come out. But I'm glad to see that article, because we're gonna really focus heavily on why To The Bang Back Cheesecakes continues to not be funded for our proposal and our rails grant that we submitted. So thank you to the millennials. They even cornered me for an exclusive interview. I didn't even know who they were. But they like cheesecakes, which appeals to most, both.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, time to fund To The Bang Back Cheesecakes.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, City Council. I just wanted to address you today about the recent giving out of licenses the city of Sacramento did for storefront dispensaries in cannabis. And I wanted to bring your attention, to your attention today, if you didn't know, about the process and the awards being allotted out. I believe the process was definitely skewed. There's a lot of irregular, irregularities that happened and the council would be wise to look into it. There was irregularities in the judging of the participants and applicants. And it wasn't so much an RFQ or RFP process, because those that are more ready to come to market were not selected. There is irregularities in the fact that some of the award winners are actually board members of core programs and actually directors of core programs. Some were even awarded the license who were working as a consultant on the RFQ program, so that's privy to information. At some point, if you look in the process, I'm sure that you're gonna see conflict of interest in who the award winners are. And I just wanted to bring it to the council's agenda, so that they can become aware of it, because it's going to be a rising tide that they're going to have to address eventually. There's no way that board members and people who aren't ready for market should be able to be allowed to have the dispensary license. Because if you're going for equity, what's gonna end up happening is these award winners who have no working capital, no idea of what's happening in the industry, are gonna be preyed upon. It's gonna be predatory practices happening to a lot of these award winners. So as the process keeps going, I behoove you to look into which license owners start partnering up with the bigger companies such as Colas and Cookies. How many of them are gonna stay independent? It's gonna be something that you guys need to look into, or we're just gonna have more of the same. So that's my time today and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more comments.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Council ideas and questions? I have one. I know a couple of us have been talking to some of our housing developers in Sacramento. So I have one request for SHRA. I know Councilmember Valenzuela has been working on this as well. We've been made aware of a new program which aims to provide affordable rental housing to middle-income households and is promoted by the California Municipal Finance Authority. It allows us essentially to access their funding pool without any contribution for the city and would allow a state subsidy essentially to build more middle-income affordable housing. And so I'd ask LaChelle Dozier, I was able to talk to her earlier today about this and to see what we can do to either access this or if we do have something like this already, what we can do to further access this over the course of the days. Any, any tool, obviously, that we can give you or that you already have, we wanna just use and use as assertively as possible. So thank you. Are there council ideas and questions? All right, member, go ahead, Councilmember Vang.
I'm on mute. I just wanna reiterate, I had mentioned this during the SAKID first presentation, but I was actually gonna make it at the end. I just wanted to just make sure that I put it on the record again. I, I did mention it during the SAKID first, but wanted to make sure that there is actually a direction or a plan to actually disaggregate all demographic data within the city of Sacramento. And I wanted to make sure that I reaffirm that, put that on record, just as a direction.
That's good. We did get that direction, absolutely.
Just wanted to confirm that. Thank you, Howard.
Yep.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, members, we do have a closed session with a couple of important items. I think let's, it is 5:55. When we adjourn, why don't we take 10 minutes and we'll reconvene in closed session at 6:05? Right? If there's nothing further to come before the city council, thank you all very much. We are adjourned.